All right. Good evening, everybody. Calling to order Tuesday, March 7th, regular meeting. I will go ahead and have our city clerks start with roll call. Mayor Kayleigh Clark here. Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb here. Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Retuzia M. De Poray.
Here.
Councilmember Rosina Farrell.
Here.
Back to you. Great, thank you. Councilmember Trine, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, will you do our land acknowledgement, please?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are approved. Next up is public comment. If we have anyone in the room, James?
James Eastman, Eastlake, Samamish Parkway. Probably tired of hearing me talk about my land, so I'm going to talk about some of these guiding principles tonight. It's kind of reminiscent of about five or six years ago when we started this concurrency path. I would have liked to think back then that there was some grand architect that had outlined this plan to solve our infrastructure problems and somehow we were going to be able to fix all of our infrastructure and magically move on. But the question in my head was, you know, how are we going to pay for this? How are we going to pay to widen Sahali Way and the Parkway? And then Parkway kind of creatively disappeared, but the Sahali Way price tag ended up being $350 million and there was no brilliant plan to do all this. And it was five to six years of just grueling process, all sorts of debacles, resignations, city managers. Just painful. And at the end of the day, we didn't get anything out of it other than erode our legislative process. So with that said, I'm looking at these guiding principles and I think, okay, we got 2,000 units. We've got to go build maybe $400,000 a unit. That's $800 million we're looking at right now if we have to go build all this ourselves and pay for it ourselves. So I just want to read one of them. I've never seen this anywhere, nowhere in the state guiding principles and the county, but I'm seeing it here in Samamish, which makes me question. It says, "Leverage existing infrastructure." Excuse me. "Focus on redevelopment of areas of existing impervious surface so that impacts to aquatic resources are minimized." I'm thinking, was our stormwater code not good enough? Isn't it great? Does it protect our aquatic resources? Is there a need to go tear down perfectly good retail in our four retail areas that only equal 50 acres? If you're going to tear all that down and concentrate all the housing there just because the impervious surface there is already in place? I mean, that's, you're looking at a density of 40 units per acre. And I mean, it's thriving and we have very little retail here, so there's no incentive for the owners there to tear those down, QFC, Trader Joe's, and build 2,000 units of affordable housing. So I just think these really are pigeonholing us. You stack these all on top of each other and there's just something that's an $800 million price tag that nobody can afford. So I think we really got to rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn?
No public comment? Just attending.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move to Zoom. For those online, if you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For those attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. I currently see four hand raised and I will promote them in the order that they have their hands raised.
Hello. Good evening, city councilors and staff. This is my first public comment since a new city council member started serving last year. I have been following your meetings online and I can only say how happy I am by the change you promoted in the city leadership, which I observe is a higher level of professionalism, seriousness, responsiveness, and orderliness. So it's a breath of fresh air and I thank you all. I forgot to introduce myself, Adore Perdellano, and I live in 20013 Northeast 42nd Street, Samamish. Been here since 1996. I want to take the time to commend you for the recent launch of the new City of Samamish website. It's really well-designed, user-friendly communication hub that I think feel will help to continue for development of a well-informed and compassionate community. I think it will transcend all the toxic discussions that have been unfortunate part of our social media environment. Finally, I want to commend the diligent work of one Samamish citizen who has been communicating to you via public comment, and that's Paul Stickney. He's been providing you with a citizen's serious analysis of the city housing development work. I'm aware of his work to help you in making smart decisions in addressing housing supply imbalances in Samamish. So I agree with him. This is the City of Samamish needs reliable data studies to quantify all housing needs across different economic and workforce segments of our growing and diversifying community. So I would like to ask you to seriously consider his persistent request for credible database decisions. I think it will just mean a lot to making sure the city is managed well today and in the future. Thank you very much for hearing my public comment.
Thank you. Paula Harper-Christensen?
Tonight you get Steve, you don't get Paula. My name is Steve Christensen, Samamish resident for 36 years. When I moved here, I was a young man. Now, my wife and I, as members of the seniors community within Samamish, are discussing the need to downsize from our large house, where we raised a large family, to something more fitting for our present needs and lifestyle. Our present house served us well as we raised four children, plus some extras, and now all have moved on and formed their own families. The inside and outside space is nice when they come to visit, but that is not a fair justification for us to stay in a house that's far larger than we need. We want to relocate to another home in our beloved city so we don't lose connection with community and dear friends we have made through the years. We, the seniors of Samamish, are in a similar predicament. Our ask tonight is for a city to take inventory of available housing and compare that with needs like ours so that we might soon have opportunities for relocation without the need to move away from our familiar surroundings, friends, and treasured community. Thanks you for serving Samamish.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Mary Richter. I've been in Samamish 22 years. And for the first thing on work plan, I'd like to thank everybody for the new city newsletter, which just came in the mail today. I really look forward to reading it and love the format. On the second item for the city's work plan, under the second page of Ease for Environment, you have Stormwater Things. And I would just always like to say that we really haven't had a lot of rain this year. It's been either really low or under average. But if there are places that are flooding, we do need to address that every year because in 2016, we heard from lots of folks that said, "Please make sure that we're not doing things as emergency responses, that we're planning and fixing the areas that have flooding." So if you've seen any flooding this year anywhere, and I've seen some, there hasn't been a lot of rain, so we need to make sure that that gets addressed, even if it's not a formal item on the work plan. I did want to talk a little bit about what James Eastman had mentioned as well. On the land use, I read two items that I wasn't particularly in support of, the fifth one and the sixth one, to focus on redevelopment areas of existing impervious surface. That would mean that you have to redo the places that we currently use and there are current places that have facilities and full infrastructure that need to be built on. Also, if you believe in the history of Samamish, it's been, all the trees have been cut down twice. First, when there was the Seattle Fire and second, when there was the San Francisco Fire, are in reverse orders. So actually, where it's cleared and we don't have anything built, there's no stormwater control. So actually, building in those areas and using the current very strong stormwater standards would actually improve the areas for aquatic resources and hold stormwater so it could be released and provide even low summer flows with cool water. So I don't agree with number five. Also, number six, I understand the idea of the wedding cake and what was done at City Hall for development patterns, but I think, while that's one idea, I think we need to have a wider breadth of things than just what's listed in six. And then I did want to speak a little bit on housing because mostly what we need to change in the city is housing. There is a housing crisis nationwide. We have statistics saying that everyone is getting older. We're an aging nation and thanks for the other people who spoke up today. I thought those impacts were, feedback was very valid. But you wouldn't build a school without knowing how large the school is and where the students are coming from and how many and what ages they would be. You wouldn't do traffic without knowing the traffic counts and figuring out where the roads go and what you need to do. So for housing, we need to know what's built, when it was built. We need to, we already know what we need from the external. We haven't looked at our internal figures. We have essential workers that like work at the Water District Police Force. We have teachers. We have people that work at Safeway and other places. And if they're always transporting themselves in because they can't live here, that's not a good thing. So we need to look at all economic and demographic, not just the lower end, it's just the external growth target. So please listen to the things other people have said and Paul Stickney's been researching for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Stickney?
Good evening, city council. I feel like former council member John James, who always goes last. I don't intend to, it just sort of happens that way. You know, we do have a housing issue in Samamish. I've been in real estate over 40 years and our supplies are sort of out of whack with what people need over time. And why fix it? Why add different and diverse housing and not have quite as much as certain houses we have oversupplies of? Well, it would be really cool to have delightful housing options to stay over life. That also would yield holistic, sustainable added enrichments across the board and improve, I'll spit out the L, livability, lifestyles, and legacies at the same time. To do that, we need numbers. We need to get our gaps of how are the number of households relative to the housing supplies for economic, demographic, and workforce housing? We need that information. And in our current planning, we have a little too much overemphasis on R and not enough emphasis on I. We've done a really thorough job in many of the recent documents with our share of regional housing affordability and our regional target for growth. But what we haven't done is to quantify all of our internal economic, demographic, and workforce needs, which are a significantly larger number. And as I've always said, we don't have to meet all of them, but we need to know what those needs are to adequately plan. In that regard, I suggest that on the work plan, housing, that the housing goal be changed to say, "Promote housing supply numbers that adequately meet local housing needs and preferences over the cycle of life." I suggest that Objective 5.2 be modified, and I'm going to paraphrase, "to meet our growth target, to meet regional needs, but also plan for internal economic, demographic, and workforce needs." Plan all three. Under Goal 6, under Financial Sustainability, there's a couple really cool options, and I sent this in today. To add beyond economic services, to add money to our budget, which would be helpful. Housing benefits in centers would have significant financial increases for the community as well as the people who live there compared to the higher-priced houses. So I'd suggest making those changes. And lastly, on the Comp Plan Guiding Principles, I suggest adding a number 12, that I'm going to paraphrase, which is along the same vein, is to as a guiding principle for our land use alternatives, figure out what we need internally for a community, compare what it would be like to meet some of those needs, come up with some range numbers to study based on those needs, and figure out which outcome is best for our community in holistic and sustainable ways. Appreciate the chance to talk. Have a good evening. Thanks again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment? Please raise your hand. I don't see any further hands raised. It's back to you, Mayor. Great, thank you. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar. I move, we approve the Consent Agenda. Second? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? All right, consent is good to go. Next, we'll move on to our Presentations and Proclamations. Councilmember O'Farrell, if you'll read the Women's History Month.
Yes, sure, thank you, Mayor. Women's History Month, March 2023. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of a nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home and serving our country courageously in the military. And whereas women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background serve as early leaders in the foreground of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have been leaders fighting for and securing equal rights and opportunity throughout our country's history as abolitionists, civil rights leaders, suffragettes, and labor activists. And women continue to lead as advocates for reproductive rights, champions of racial justice, and LGBTQI plus equality to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite significant progress, women and girls continue to face systemic barriers to full and equal participation in our economy and society and are undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas the City of Samamish employs women, many in leadership roles, who serve the community in impactful ways. And women are educators, doctors, scientists, childcare providers, first responders, service members, and more. And whereas this year's theme is dedicated to celebrating women who tell our stories. And let us celebrate the contributors of women throughout our history and honor the stories that have too often gone untold. Let us recognize that fundamental freedoms are interconnected. When opportunities for women are withheld, we all suffer. And when women's lives are improved, we all gain. Now therefore, Mayor Kayleigh Clark, Mayor of Samamish, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, to hereby proclaim March 2023 to be Women's History Month in the City of Samamish. We will honor Women's History Month with content and with content and resources on the city's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion page and on social media.
Great, thank you. All right, first presentation we have up are our monthly council project updates. David Pyle.
Great, thank you. Bear with me for a second while I share my screen. All right, good evening, Mayor Clark, City Council, David Pyle, Community Development. I'm here tonight to provide you with your fourth monthly update on major planning projects. Over the next few months, there will continue to be many meetings on the Comprehensive Plan, Climate Action Plan, and Housing Action Plan. You can see from the list here, there are quite a few. I've listed the scheduled meetings through the first week of June, although there could be meetings added or changed as we continue our efforts on these different planning projects. Keep in mind, there's a lot of background work you don't see here, and staff have been very busy keeping these projects on track. For the Comprehensive Plan, we continue to focus on finalizing and adopting the Vision Statement, setting the project scope, building background information on topics such as land use and beginning review of Comp Plan elements starting with land use and housing. You will see on tonight's agenda a presentation and discussion on guiding principles that will help set the foundation for evaluation of scenarios to accommodate state, regional, and county mandates that we must demonstrate compliance with for Comp Plan certification. Tonight, we will consider land use guiding principles that will help in development of alternatives. In two weeks, the council will consider adopting a Vision Statement and formalizing the Comprehensive Plan scope of work. On April 6, we'll be back to present land use alternatives that address many of the issues we are facing. Later this spring, we will begin review of the land use and housing elements. For the Climate Action Plan, our focus is on establishing city climate goals and finishing the conversation on that topic that began at the February 14 City Council meeting. Following goal-setting, we will shift gears into finalizing development of emissions and VMT reduction strategies, which will be presented to the commission and council. We will also be working on launching the newly-added Community Climate Action Plan component. Finally, we are in the final, in the phase of setting up a community advisory group to help with the Community Climate Action Plan component. The first meeting of the group will be held, or is scheduled to be held, on Wednesday, April 12. Just a reminder that the community baseline and profile and the greenhouse gas emission and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategies are due to commerce in June of 2023 in accordance with grant funding deadlines. As described in the prior slide, we'll be continuing the conversation on climate goal-setting. And the first meeting of the community advisory group is scheduled for April 12. That's encircled here in red. As the community advisory group is formed up, it will take a few meeting cycles to integrate a review loop for that new group into the legislative process. So please keep in mind that the sequence of things may appear out of order at first. However, we do have plans to integrate the group into the broader project meeting cycle and cadence. For the Housing Action Plan, our current focus is on editing the draft Housing Action Plan after it was presented to the Planning Commission last week to integrate comment from the commission. The Housing Action Plan draft will be brought back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing at the April 6 Planning Commission meeting. While we are on this slide, I also wanted to make sure we remind everyone watching that the final city adopted Housing Action Plan is due to the Department of Commerce in June of 2023. As stated in the previous slide, the next meeting on the Housing Action Plan will be on April 6 with the Planning Commission. Following this meeting, it will be brought to the City Council for review. It's ultimately scheduled for a public hearing with the City Council on June 6. That's it. If there are any questions, please let me know.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, hey, David. On that calendar, when will the Housing Action Plan come back to us? I saw on the 6, it goes to the Planning Commission. When will it come back to us?
Yeah, so it goes back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and potential recommendation on April 6. Then it comes back to the City Council on May 9, where you'll have a workshop on it and review the Planning Commission recommendation and be able to identify any edits or changes you'd like to see happen. And then on June 6, you are, you're scheduled tentatively to review the Housing Action Plan and ideally adopt by resolution the Housing Action Plan, which ultimately serves as the foundation for our housing element and our land use element, among other guiding policy documents that support that work.
Great. I know we've gotten feedback before with public hearings to make sure that there's time for, if we do get public comments, to be able to incorporate those. So if we do get any major comments from the public during that hearing, is there time later in June to come back with updates on that? Since June is the deadline?
So my understanding is it does need to be adopted and transmitted to the State Department of Commerce. I want to say June 20 is the date that is the deadline, although that might be the Housing, the Climate Action Plan. I just need to look into the record and see what the requirement is per the grant.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure we incorporate that, right? Like, the point of a public hearing isn't just to kind of check the box. It's actually potentially get feedback from the public. So we don't often get big feedback, but if we do, I want to make sure we have time. Thank you.
And one option with that is, you know, if there is anything that comes up in the June 6 public hearing that was not identified in the May 9 workshop, that you could create a strike draft matrix and you could make motions on individual amendments that could be added at that point so we could track those. And then you could adopt the Housing Action Plan as amended per the matrix.
Thanks, David.
All right, any other questions or comments for David?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have new website and newsletter presentation. Very exciting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott McCall, City Manager. Well, Mike Sugg is coming up to the presentation table. Just wanted to give him a little bit of time to get set up, but also to say, we're really excited about this. I know we've been looking forward to this. I am going to, it's a little bit hard because we have the glass in between, but I'm going to hand down copies. If you don't already have one of, oh, all of you managed to get them already. Perfect. Lead is way ahead of me. So I'm excited to find out that residents are already noticing both the website and the newsletter. Hopefully, it would have hit pretty much everyone's homes by today. So encourage everyone to go look for that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to start off with the new website. Mike?
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. My name is Mike Sugg, Supervising Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. And as Scott mentioned, I'm here tonight to give a brief overview of our new website and a little bit of information about our newsletter that we just relaunched. So we'll start with the new website. We are very excited to officially share with council and the public the result of about a year and a half of hard work between staff and our consultants, as well as great feedback from our council members. What we have here is a website that has improved navigation, better accessibility, and a variety of helpful functions that weren't available on our old site. For those of us who have interacted with the old website, we will all recognize how much of an improvement this new site represents for the city. And on behalf of the website team, I also want to thank the public for their patience while our IT department and our consultants work to address bugs and redirect broken links. It's a work in progress. So with that said, here we have the home screen of our new website. The toolbar at the top shows quick links to reach your jobs, to contact us, translations, which I'll touch on in a moment, and then access our social media accounts. Then you have your main navigation button, excuse me, main navigation bar here in blue. We have a new and improved search function that can be accessed here. We have a new and improved search function that can be accessed here, which also allows for filtering and tagging, so just a way to help folks find what they need a little bit faster. There's six quick links buttons down here with some of the most frequently requested topics. And then beneath that, we have our news items and our upcoming events, and we're in the process of filling out our event calendar at the moment. So if we click on an event such as Earth Day, one of the nice little process improvement features that we've integrated into the website is this share panel. So all of our webpages have this now, and it makes it very easy for somebody to pop it over to Facebook, Twitter, send it through an email. And then on the events, we have the ability to add them to your calendar now, so you can quickly add them to Outlook or Google. Jumping back to the main page, one of the most important considerations we had was to ensure that the website was accessible to everyone. And one of the ways that we did this was by offering translations into the three most commonly spoken languages by residents apart from English, which are Spanish, simplified Chinese, and Hindi. So if we click one of these as an example, the whole page will translate to Hindi. And we'll go back to English. Let's see, and these, our IT department wanted me to note that the translations are done through Microsoft Azure. Under the Your Government section, we'll go to our department website, or excuse me, our department's page, the City Manager's Office. And each department has a landing page like this, which includes the contact information for administrative and director staff, as well as links to some relevant resources. This section of the website is also where you'll find the council webpage with an email address for the full council, as well as individual council members, and also all of our advisory boards and commissions, such as the Human Services Commission. Pictures are good. Let's see here, where are we going next? Under the Our Community heading is where residents will find general community information. You have our new Big Ideas page, which is a way for residents to get involved in some of our more major planning projects, DEIB, Environment, Human Services, and a really big one that we'll click on here is Parks and Trails. Here, you can find out more information about parks generally, and then dive into all the individual parks. So just looking at Beaver Lake, we have, you know, information about the address, parks amenities with nice little icons, hours, we have policies, park photos, and links to reserve any amenities that are reservable. Doing Business, this is where residents can access our permit center, they can find our solicitations, RFPs and RFQs, they can learn more about how to get a business license or solicitor's license, basically anything that somebody coming to the city looking to do business would need. Here we have our News and Events. This is, as you would expect, our newsletters, our event calendar, our TV 21, things of that nature, and we will return to that here shortly. And our last button here is I Want To, which contains some of our more frequently requested services. So if we click on that, you'll see there's a number of things. You can learn about winter storm readiness, learn about tree removal permits, report a concern, report a spill, things of that nature. And through this page, you can access two of our most frequently visited pages, which are the traffic cameras and the public records requests. So we are very excited to share that we now have high-resolution traffic cameras available at eight intersections throughout the city, and these are refreshed every three minutes and provide a good overview of the traffic situation in Sammamish. And if anyone remembers, our old website used to have two blurry cameras, one up on Sahali and one down on the Parkway. And so again, just represents a really big improvement in our residents' ability to see what's going on. And this page always receives, or I should say, our previous traffic cam page always received a huge influx of traffic during snow and ice events, and so I'd expect this to be the same. And then, let's see, let's look at Public Records. So if we go back up to I Want To, Request Public Records, it's very much like our old website. You can submit a public records request through the fillable form that's on this page. But something that's new is that the public can now see the documents that were provided for previously filled PRRs. So if we go here, we can see all of the requests that have been filled, and we'll just click on this first one as an example. And so you can see this requester was trying to get a copy of the plan for an address in the city, and you can see what the city provided to him for that, and it just links to our Hightail, it's a file sharing site, and you can access everything that we gave to that Not only does this improve transparency in the public's experience, but it also reduces the volume of PRRs slightly, because requesters often submit public records requests for the same topic. So it's kind of a self-service portal in that way. And that was just a really quick overview of the new site. There's a bunch of other functions and pages that we didn't get to, but I wanted to keep this brief, and maybe we could just look at the newsletter before turning it over for questions. So again, going to News and Events, City Newsletters, we can access our revamped newsletter here. And I can just quickly scroll through as I'm talking. It's been the better part of a year since we published a printed newsletter, but it was definitely worth the wait. Our communications consultant, Joy Johnston, and her team completely redesigned and refreshed the newsletter, which just hit homes last week. In talking with our city manager and a variety of staff from many departments, I can say that we are all blown away by the work that Joy and her team have done. Unfortunately, she was not able to join us tonight, but she did provide some information that I could share here. The first being that the newsletter was delivered to nearly 23,000 addresses in Sammamish, both homes and businesses, on March 6. The new design is meant to be eye-catching, inviting, professional, and friendly in order to encourage readership. Our plan going forward is to publish newsletters roughly every two months, and the upcoming mailing schedule will be May 1, which is the one that we're currently working on. Next one will be June 20. There's a little bit of a break over the summer, and then we start back up on September 1, and then November 1 will be our final edition. And then separately, we're going to be sending out the annual recreation guide in April. And the intent of the newsletter is to provide useful and interesting information to the community, educate residents about city services, encourage involvement, and reflect the City Council's goals. And future editions may have focused themes such as summer events or emergency preparedness, winter storm readiness, just depending on the season. And before I hand it back to the mayor, I'd just like to ask the city manager if there's anything else he'd like to add that I may have missed.
Thank you, Mike. So, Council, I just, again, I want to thank the whole team for both. The website has been a really heavy lift. It has involved every department in the city, as you might expect, and the IT team and the consultants have been working on this for about a year and a half. And then the newsletter has been a labor of love for us to try to get us to a point where it really reflects where we'd like it to be, and hopefully you all will concur with that. And moving forward, we're going to try to make it as impactful as hopefully this one is in terms of what information is in there and how we continue to use the newsletter to share out stories and events that are upcoming. I did want to call attention to the center page of that, which, of the newsletter, which I know Mike already took down, but if all you have to do is open your newsletter at home and open it to dead middle to the Big Ideas pages, and they split the middle fold, and those are to encourage people to get involved in some of our major planning processes that are going on this year. And this is encouraging everyone to try to find something that interests you and to dive in, and you can sign up for yourself, you can check that you want to receive the emails and get on the listserv, and then anytime there's an update or anything changes with that project, you'll be notified, and hopefully that's a way we can continue to communicate out better where each of these projects are. So I'm excited about that piece as well. So with that, I'd like to stop talking and turn it over to the mayor for any questions that council might have.
Great, thank you. I will say, I was probably one of the first that kept refreshing the city of Sammamish webpage because I was very excited. So, yeah, I mean, I haven't found any issues yet, but I haven't clicked around like some of our frequent flyers of the website yet. So, yeah, I want to say thank you to you and all the staff. This looks great. Does Council, any questions or comments? Yeah, Councilmember Howe?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for the work. It's wonderful to see traction and progress. And so my question has, just to do quickly, first of all, as we spot things that we think, ooh, it'd be really cool if we could only just, where would you like the comments to go? And do you want to structure them in a way that would actually be helpful? So if you provided, for example, a format or a template of how you would like to see feedback, it would really facilitate the process of getting the feedback uploaded and utilized in a way that's meaningful. So that's, it's an ask. If you could do that, that would be great. Otherwise, you're just going to get a bunch of random stuff, and you're not going to want that. I know you just sent it to Joy, but she doesn't want that either. So there's that. And do you already have something?
We don't have a template developed yet, but I was just going to say, if you do have any suggestions, comments?
I do, because I have done websites, and, oh my gosh, you really, if you can channel their creative energy in a way that's actually constructive, it can be really helpful. So I am delighted to just provide over a couple of samples, and you could, you know, make up something from that, I'm sure. The other question I had is gang printing. So when you guys go out to press, you're going to be doing out Parks and Rec and stuff like that, is there an opportunity to gang print the newsletter with Parks and Rec's schedule, so that you're not going to the printer twice and paying for the extra postage? So that's just a question mark. And timing, it's a timing thing. This is a different publication, it's a slick, it's different paper and the rest of it. However, is there an opportunity for a cost savings if we gang print? So that was my question. Thanks.
I think we have done an insert in the past in our newsletter for the recreation guides, so that's something that we can definitely look into, and I just don't know the answer off the top of my head. I'd need to talk with Joy, our communications consultant.
If I may follow up on that, I think the timing right now would probably be that they would be separate by design, only because we don't want the rec guide to get lost in the shuffle, because the rec guide is the one that stands throughout the rest of the summer in essence. It's got our entire events calendar in it.
And I understand that, that does make sense. The, I wonder if there's a way to just kind of replicate a piece of the newsletter. It's consistency, just, even if it's a reminder like, oh, yeah, and I saw a part of this in the newsletter, so that the multiple hits will be an advantage, and it will look like it was on purpose, and not, oh, we just, you know, just build it out separately. So the intentional part.
Sure, appreciate that. Councilmember Howe, we can follow up with you later on and talk about that. I think in terms of a spot for input, I think that's a great suggestion, and I think that's something we can build in so that we can capture all of that.
All right, anything else? Great, thank you so much. Oh, Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I had a question regarding accessibility, particularly because I'm seeing, and you just, I didn't realize, our newsletter is going to be on our website. Like, how accessible are our PDFs in terms of like text-to-audio, that sort of accommodation?
That is a great question that I do not know the answer to, but let me follow up on that and I'll go back to the council.
Yeah, usually JAWS screen readers can read them, it's just the photos, that's why there's alt text. But usually, they can read PDFs, and it's just left to right, top to bottom. For the PDF.
Did you get that, Mike? Oh, Kayleigh was just saying that a lot of those programs naturally will read PDFs in the order, in the correct order, but oftentimes, it's up to the designer to design it in such a way that the software picks up where it's supposed to read.
That makes sense. Yeah, let me check on that one.
Yeah.
There. Just again, want to thank the staff and Joy for such a wonderful newsletter and also the website. I think what I'm really excited about, which I actually didn't know, is that we're going to have the website in different languages. I think that is such a huge win. As we were sitting there, I tried to read something in Hindi, and it's like a very high-level Hindi, so it's gonna, yeah, I think it's going to revive some of my brain cells as I start to read. But I also think it is so important, because, you know, we have a large population who does understand that script, and, you know, I know, like, when my parents come over, for them to feel really connected to the city, I think, you know, this website is really going to make a difference. I think another fun thing would be for, there are lots of language schools here which teach Hindi, and I'm definitely going to be recommending them that they come and either check the work or, you know, just learn how to read about their city in Hindi. So very, very excited about that. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks so much, Mike. Okay, next up, we have our Public Works Department First Quarter Update. Audrey and Doug?
We are very excited to present a first quarter update for the Public Works Department. You'll find we have quite a bit going on, and we do have planned quarterly updates throughout this year so that we can just provide a little bit more insight into some of our operational programs, our capital programs, and our strategic planning efforts. Doug McIntyre will be assisting me with the transportation planning section of the presentation in the presentation this evening. Feel free to ask questions, and this is meant to be an engaging and formal presentation, so we really look forward to the feedback as well. With that, let me start to share my screen. Just wanted to make sure everyone could see that, and I am planning to do a quick demo for my Sammamish, so I wanted to make sure I shared it the correct way. Thanks again. So Public Works, we functionally have seven different divisions within the department.
Apologize, we're still just seeing you and not your shared screen.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Stewart was complimenting you, so it's not that we mind, but I'm sure the presentation would be more helpful.
Thank you.
Audrey, do you want me to share the slides?
Oh, there we go.
Is that working? Okay, thank you. Let me start over. So again, just first quarter update, and feel free to ask questions along the way as well. So Public Works does have, let's see if I can move this, sorry, seven operational divisions, and we'll go through each one of those. We all have a lot going on, especially this first quarter. So wanted to quickly, before we dive into each one of the divisions, wanted to make sure that everyone who had to use my Sammamish, Mike just presented a great overview of our new website, and as you can see, the list on the left, we are, Public Works is responsible for quite a bit of our city's infrastructure. So anytime that any resident or anyone has a concern about the infrastructure, we really ask that you use the mySammamish tool, and this is where I'm hoping I shared my screen correctly. Perfect. So as demonstrated with the new website, there's a few different ways to get there. You can certainly put anything in the search engine, and there's the I Want To, and you can go down here to report an issue, or you can click on this. My Sammamish also is able to be downloaded from the Apple Store or from Google Play if you have a smart device. There are some instructions on how to use this, you can feel free to reach out to us at any time, but this is a great service. It is, does have, is powered by CClickFix, is the software behind it, so a lot of cities tend to use it. is the software behind it. So a lot of cities tend to use this for their request portal. And it is, as you can see here, dependent on your location. So we'll just go ahead and make requests. And the first thing it'll prompt you to do is confirm your location. And then the next thing, it's really looking for you to place your request into a category. So we'll just drainage and flooding issues. If you do have a photo, that always helps us, please feel free to add a photo. In this case, I don't have one ready. And this is where you can add to your description of what you want to request. If there are some required fields, those are always displayed. And it's also, we have text in there that shows what is displayed publicly and what can have the option to be displayed privately as well. So this is where we would maybe put some specifics about where the location is, so we can just say, you know, "On 228." And then if we had any more information, this is where we could provide it. And then this is where it'll give you options. You can set up an account and submit as yourself, and that will be displayed publicly. You can hide your identity, so that the information will still be public, but your identity is anonymous, or you can submit as a guest. And I'll go ahead and do that option right now. If I were to submit the submit button, this actually would go on the backend of things to a variety of our team members so that we can make sure the issue and request is addressed very efficiently. In this case, I'm not going to submit, so that we don't have to deal with that. This is what the app looks like if you are planning on downloading this to your smartphone. Just wanted to highlight a few things. In 2022, we actually had over 1,700 requests that we processed, and over 1,600 that we were able to close. Our average time, you can see, is 0.2 of a day to acknowledge each request. And there was an average of 10.6 days in our closing time. So this app is great. And you can select when you're submitting your request, if you'd like to follow along with the progress of your requests. And each time, you can choose to get an email, so acknowledging your requests. And like I said, you'll get a different email when the request itself is closed. These are some of the top categories that we received in 2022. It is pretty neat to see on the staff side of things, our dashboards, and how the requests tend to change throughout the year depending on the season. Okay, also wanted to go through and start with some of our items that we're working on in the Administration Division of Public Works. So our first quarter, we've been planning a GIS interactive map that will show all of our capital projects, currently active projects as well as planned projects. We are really looking forward to bringing this back to council in a few months, and we'll be utilizing this map for our transportation planning, for our T-SIP planning this spring, as well as stormwater. And we're working with parks to see if they're interested in getting their projects on that map. It will be a public-facing map that was meant to be engaging. And of course, we're working on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update, and there'll be some more details at the end of the presentation on that. Solid Waste Management is actually managed through Public Works, but it is managed based on a team. We do have a spring recycling event planning at the beginning of April, two events, actually. And those mailers will be going out to the public soon, and information will be added to our website soon. You'll notice throughout the presentation, there's often boxes just kind of showing all of different assets that the different teams are responsible for maintaining, or some more of our day-to-day operations. So maintenance and operations, we're wrapping up hopefully snow and ice. The forecast keeps changing. This time of year, we really switch back over to flood response and rain event response, and of course, pothole repairs and planning for our summer work. One item from maintenance that we will be bringing forward to council in April is discussing our level of service for our snow and ice management program. We'd really like to be future-focused for this program, bring in some technology and equipment, and right along with that, ask council to adopt a level of service for our program. Our Development Review Division of Public Works just wanted to highlight a few stats from 2022 for this division. They were able to issue 607 permits, and they completed over 1,200 inspections last year. They are always busy. Highlighted down below are some of the bigger development and project reviews that they're currently working on, and their average queue ranges between 15, 80 permits and projects in their queue every week. Our Capital Projects Engineering Team, also very busy. They've had some very significant accomplishments in 2022. And in the first quarter of '23, we just closed out Issaquah Falls City Phase 1 projects. We are recruiting and onboarding a new team member, and we are really diving into some of our planning and programmatic work, as well as preparing some projects for design and construction. Our Public Works standards will be back to council likely in May of 2023 with an introduction of those planned changes, but they are, at this point, mostly administrative changes. Just wanted to highlight some strategic planning efforts that will be back to council in the second quarter of this year for our pavement management program. And of course, we have some construction work underway. I'm sure if you've seen the reader boards and activity on 228, that's preparing for our overlay in the second week of April. And we also have another overlay. I'm going to construction this year in Kohani, and City of Issaquah is overlaying the section of 43rd that we discussed a few council meetings ago. We're also kicking off some preliminary engineering and design work for some of our pavement preservation work and continuing to manage grants. For some of our larger programs, we're continuing our ADA barrier removal program. We are kicking off our preliminary engineering corridor study, reviewing all the data that has been conducted for Solway, and that's city limits to 233rd, and as well as working on our intersection improvements for that same intersection. Lewis Thompson Road is completing 60% design, and our team will be back in April to present that design to council with the intention of completing design by the end of '23 for 2024 construction. Our Traffic Management Center is shown in this slide. Wanted to really take a minute to talk about our traffic engineering team. You know, everyone has had the pleasure of seeing our new traffic cameras on our website, but this is what a traffic management center looks like up at City Hall. It is a really great system. We're able to actually access some of this remotely, and it's been very helpful, especially during those snow and ice storms. But our traffic engineering team monitors several intersections for queuing and helps with a lot of their different analysis as well.
Audrey, can I ask just a quick question?
Sure.
Just on that last slide, when looking at the traffic command center, it looks like the Situation Room, I have to say. And I'm fascinated. I'd love to see it sometime, because we were both looking at each other. Where is that room? So it's awesome to get a picture of it, see, because probably the one thing that everybody cares about is that the traffic lights are functioning and traffic is moving around the city. So this is a super important room. So great to see a picture of it. And it's located here in City Hall. Is that what you said?
Yes. Yes, it's upstairs on the second floor of City Hall. And those four TV screens in the front of the TMC display our camera feeds, and we can rotate those cameras that are listed through those. The one on the right is connected to the statewide TMC system, so we can monitor conditions a little bit from more of a regional approach.
And so can I ask you a question that you probably don't know the answer to, because it's just something that came up in conversation one day? So when we have an intersection with a traffic light that's not working, say, you know, it's gone to the blinking red, is there like a button that goes off in the room that goes, "Traffic light down, quick, everybody go fix, fix?" You know, that's in my head, there's a little cartoon that goes on, and this is what I imagine happens. But when something like that happens, what happens in that room?
I'd have to go ahead and ask our engineers. I don't think that there's a blinking red light, although that would be amazing. We do have some intersections that we're continuing to watch. I'm sure you're thinking of 228th and Southeast 8. That's been a challenging set of, series of events that we've been working to diagnose, and actually came up with quite a few things that were going on there. So we do have the opportunity to access a lot of these cameras or the engineering team remotely and assess conditions. They have quite a few tools. And actually, there's quite a bit of different software programs that'll have to talk to each other. That might be a future presentation if you're interested in knowing more to make these systems work. So it's pretty complex, but I'll have to get back to you on in terms of what alert is popped up. You know, if anyone does see a signal in flash, this team does consider that an emergency. There's some language on our website on how to report that traffic signal outage as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. Again, just wanted to kind of highlight some of our operational day-to-day things. This is actually the inside of one of our signal cabinets. They are quite complex, as you can see. So we do have four planned upgrades this year. Most of our signal cabinets are over 20 years old, and so we do have a plan to upgrade those. They are very expensive to replace. I want to say $30,000, $35,000 for each cabinet, so a very important thing to have replaced and functioning correctly. We also are working on some power conversions in select areas for our speed radar signs and our school zone flashers. Most of those are operated by solar, and where those work well, they work well. There's some locations just with our tree canopy, they're not working well, so we're looking at converting to a few of those to power. We're also planning for our 2023 pavement striping program in our crosswalks. That's actually a different material that comes down on the road. It's Thermo. And we do have our 2023 traffic counts, which is a very important year to, excuse me, to collect our traffic counts, as it will inform our concurrency model. And finally, we're rolling out a few more action items in pilot programs to have more traffic cameras that'll be incorporated into our system. Some other things that this team is working on is kicked off already. The first quarter of this year is, you'll see a resolution in a few weeks to reduce speed zones, I'm sorry, reduce speed in work zones. This was a resolution that went to council last year as a pilot program. It worked very well. We're asking to bring that back as a permanent resolution that would allow us to reduce speeds to protect our construction teams that are out there. We'll be kicking off a school corridor traffic analysis, and as well as a citywide traffic speed assessment. And we're looking also at some options to replace or rebuild our traffic signal at the intersection of 228 and Issaquah Pine Lake Road. You can see in the photo at the bottom that has some paint issues. So we're looking at the best options for that signal and intersection. And then we also are beginning work on our 244th and Southeast 24th Street. This is a concurrency failure intersection, and we will be installing an all-waste stop this summer. And we always do those in the summer if possible, so that we can give the school districts plenty of notice to plan for that school year. And then just also wanted to highlight that this team participates in our development review process, so that usually includes traffic analysis, TIAs. And last year, they actually processed 35 concurrency applications. Okay, our Storm and Surface Water Utility. You did hear a lot about this utility throughout last year, so I'll kind of skip through a lot of these slides. But this fund is quite a big team. As you can see, the team that, gosh, there's a lot of our engineering and planning work is listed at the top, but it's very well supported by our maintenance team. And of course, different types of support from the director and administrative assistants. So upcoming on our first quarter highlights is our annual report to ecology for NPDS stormwater permit. This report is pages and pages long, and all based on data. It takes a lot of time to prepare. Most cities start months in advance, so we're really looking forward to completing that effort. Thank you for adopting the SMAP on the consent calendar, so we will be submitting that before the end of March. That's also due to ecology this year. We've also kicked off a new source control program, and that's an NPDS requirement as well. And the other program that we're kicking off and will likely go out for RFQ soon will be our storm pipe condition assessment. That program was actually implemented, or will be implemented this year, and that was created based on our enhanced level of service that council adopted in 2022. As you can see, this team is also responsible for conducting and completing a lot of our inspections throughout the city. So we have many different types. We inspect our annual facility inspections every year. So there are storm ponds, tanks, and vaults. We look at the privately maintained facilities, same thing, storm ponds, tanks, and vaults. Our low-impact development program, and then we also have dam inspections. So we have eight stormwater ponds that are actually considered dams. And we have three ponds that are considered high-hazard dams that have a little bit of extra measures that we have to do to make sure those are functioning properly. These are some of the planning efforts that we've already kicked off this quarter. These are all based on the enhanced level of service. So one of those efforts is the Next Basin Plan. This will be the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan. We're really looking forward to introducing that preliminary efforts and engaging with the community on that plan. We are planning on having that plan complete in 2024. This team is also developing the criteria for our capital efforts, our stormwater property acquisition funds, who'll be completing the hydrology study. And you did hear from us a few weeks ago on the stormwater system development charge, but we would like to complete that update in next quarter. Our storm and surface water team will be back to council on March 21st to present an overview or introduction to our water quality enforcement policy. And you'll see in a few slides on how this team helps to manage our grants. The other component of this utility is our capital programs and projects. So a lot of these have been updated on our new website, so I encourage you to go and take a look at the status of all these projects and where we're headed this year. We are kicking off, and a lot of these projects will be getting their design phase. Some of them may even need some alternatives analysis work done on them. So we do have an RFQ out now for consultants to support design base for a lot of these smaller projects. And we have two very large projects right now that are scheduled to complete design this year, and we're well on our way. And then construction is planned for 2024 for both of those projects. Okay, transportation planning. Again, I'm joined by Doug McIntyre, our Senior Transportation Planning Manager, as we wanted to, excuse me, dive into some of our items that we have on deck, both in first quarter of this year as well as for the entire year. So first, wanted to start out with an overview of what this team covers. It's quite a bit. In addition to transportation management, they help us out quite a bit with our solid waste management. So this team also, you can see on the list on the right, all the different regional efforts that we coordinate and participate in. This team is also responsible for capital project planning grants and our current traffic design management and alternative transit programs. Some of our policy and strategic planning efforts that were kicking off this first quarter of '23 include the transportation element of the comprehensive plan update, our transit plan. You'll hear a presentation from Doug shortly after this, as well as we've already have been well underway for our 2024 to 2029 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan, or T-SIP. And we're getting ready to kick off our school corridor analysis along with our transportation engineering team. Many of these efforts are highlighted on the new website in our Big Ideas page. So I wanted to take a minute and just provide a general context for some of our transportation planning efforts. As you can see, they're all rooted within the transportation element. So once this element is defined, it really provides the next steps for our policy, and it helps to find our policy efforts, capital efforts, regional coordination and planning, and our multimodal efforts. I have to apologize in advance about my graphic here. This was intended to be envisioned as a 3D house, so if you could envision the woodwork, there's a building, the framework for a house. I was trying to illustrate how transportation element fits into our comprehensive plan update. So if you can envision the foundation as the current comprehensive plan, it's always built on strategic planning, data, and engagement, and many other things. We are currently in the process of rebuilding or remodeling our house, so we are creating the city's policy framework or updating that framework. And of course, the entire house is represented by the comprehensive plan update. Each one of these framework pieces is meant to shown graphically, but is really meant to demonstrate how each one of these elements is really dependent on each other. So decisions made with the housing action plan that informs the housing element very much influences the transportation element. And so one shift in all of those, just as you would imagine the frame for a house, that entire framework can shift. And so one shift in all of those, just as you would imagine the frame for a house, that entire framework can shift. Over on the right, was just kind of walking through how a simpler plan, like a capital improvement plan would start. Maybe first be reflecting council's goals and the city, also reflecting the city's vision. All of, all of that would be channeled towards building the framework of the, the city's policy. And in particular, we're focusing on the transportation element tonight. And then if you can think about building, building a house, remodeling a house, once that frame is built, you're kind of diving into the interior. So think about, you know, you're, you're building your kitchen. You're picking out the cabinets, you're constructing those interior walls. That can be thought of in the transportation world as building your six year capital plans and other fundamental planning efforts. If you're remodeling a house, you might be looking towards that next step of painting the inside walls, right? What color are you going to paint? Where are you going to put the furniture? In the transportation world, that becomes the designing construction of your projects. And of course, once you move into your modeled house, again, transportation world, that becomes managing and maintaining our new infrastructure. So we wanted to talk a little bit about what the transportation element will become. And before I do, I want to dive into a little bit about the history and the foundation of that element. So as you know, we have an element in our current comprehensive plan. It is a little bit more broad in, in context and the direction that we're going with our transportation elements. With the updated comprehensive plan is both broad and detailed. We are really wanting that element to give us very specific measurable policies and strategies that we can implement. So the list on, on the bottom is really meant to help you visualize what the transportation element will be with this new plan. And part of what will be helping us provide that direction in the transportation element will be our updated concurrency model, public engagement, those policy connections, those other pillars or walls of the house, updating our 20 year project lists, our financial strategies and a review of existing plans and conditions, including, including our draft TMP. We'll also be at the same time going through our transit plan process. We'll be kicking off our long range system completion plan so that we have an idea of how to build out the city's transportation network and even more importantly, how to fund that transportation network. Those elements will be all done in a parallel path as we're updating our element that are meant to inform our elements and indirectly inform our other elements. And I just wanted, wanted to, as I'm finishing up all of our divisions, just wanted to say, take a minute to, to thank all of our partners for all of our planning and projects and program efforts. So just wanted to spend a few slides going over some of our grant funding efforts because none of our, our transportation or stormwater projects would be possible or a lot of them without our funding partners. So just wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge some of the funding that we've received and then I'll open it up for questions. So these are some of the stormwater grants that we have received recently. And we'll be helping to fund a lot of our design and construction efforts for our stormwater program. These are grants that we have applied for or will be applying for very soon that we are very excited about and are hoping to receive very shortly. But these are efforts for 2020 this year and going into hopefully grant award in 2023. We also have quite a few grants that support our solid waste program. The grants that we receive from King County actually fund those recycling events that are so well received by the city. And the other category of grants I wanted to dive into was our transportation grants. So going back to transportation planning, it's so great to have a, a very broad policy and detailed policy elements that make up our transportation element of our comprehensive plan. And if you can go, you know, think about that house, house slide that I was describing, that next step, once you have that great, great framework built, is really developing a really well thought out, long-term 20 year plan and then, and then our six year capital plan. Our capital plan, that TSIP is absolutely instrumental in our grant funding. So we do have two projects that we've applied for and we're hoping to have, receive hopefully soon, later this year or in 2023. And thank you. I know there's quite a few questions, so back to you, Mayor, and more than happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. I think the newsletter would be definitely benefit from your graphics next time. That'd be great. All right, council, any questions? Oh, yeah, it's not working. Okay, Councilmember Stewart. Has Deputy Mayor Lamb stuck and yours not on? So.
Awesome. Yeah, great.
Hands maybe.
Well, we'll just guess and randomly wait, flag you down. Thank you. That was a really comprehensive update and I really appreciate that. And I do love pictures, so I loved your graphic. One of the questions I had though was, you said that the transportation element was the functional equivalent to a transportation master plan. So will there or will there not be a separate transportation master plan? That has been sort of the million dollar question for a long time.
I'm happy to take that, Doug. And I can share my screen just really quick for reference here again. Okay. There, there will not be, so this transportation, all of our work in this, this next few years is really building a much more detailed and, and action oriented element for our comprehensive plan update. So if that's done to the, the level of detail that we are wanting it to, that essentially becomes the equivalent of a transportation master plan.
Okay. Maybe we can do like a follow-up offline meeting because I really want to understand how, like, every other city in the region has a separate like mobility master plan or transportation master plan. So I just want to understand how we make sure we're not missing something there.
Appreciate that, Councilmember Stewart. I'm going to jump in really quickly if I could. Audrey and Doug and I have talked at length about this. I believe Doug has some comparable cities to ours that actually use their transportation element of their comp plan as their functional transportation master plan. At the end of the day, what, what Audrey is referring to is if it is as detailed and as thorough as what we intend the transportation element to be, you could basically take that and rebrand it as the TMP and it would be the same thing. It's the same data and analysis. We happen to be lined up perfectly for that right now, given our timeframe. So I think the plan is from the transportation planning group is that if we're going to do all that work, then, then we feel that with the, the planning work we're doing right now, I'm stealing a little bit of Doug's thunder because he's about to talk about the transit plan scope of work. But that and the long range system completion plan, along with the other items that Audrey mentioned, will have us, will have a much more robust transportation element than the current plan that was done in 2015, 2014, I should say. And that, and, and that's by design. I think if I were to put a finer point on it, some work was done on a TMP prior, previously. That was, I think the work was paused in 2019 or 2020.
It was actually paused in 2018.
A little bit earlier than that.
Yeah, January of 2018 is when the vote was taken to stop the work on what was at the time described as a 70% complete TMP.
So we have a lot of work done on that. And, and that's great. However, there are some components of that work that based on council's goals, we feel really need to be more robust for that plan to be complete. And so based on that, we're going to take the work that was already done. Either way, we have to update the, the analysis and the data because it's now far enough along that we need updated. And we very much feel that based on council's goals like sustainability and housing and transportation, that we need to roll all those into our analysis to create what will be the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. And so if we do all of those and all that work building up to it, that will be in all actuality the RTMP. And Doug, if you want to jump in just for a moment, can you help us out with what some of our surrounding cities do in this regard?
Yeah, so it is done in a variety of different ways. The city of Redmond, as Scott alluded to, does what, kind of what we're approaching it as in the sense of the transportation element operating as a transportation master plan. Other cities, like I said, have done it in different ways. The city of Essequa adopted a TMP in 2021, I believe. And they actually called it a mobility master plan. Functionally, it's the same as the TMP. So there, there is a variety of approaches to it. Bellevue, as far as we can tell, does not have a TMP, but they have other more specific plans that collectively, I think, would create what you would get out of a TMP. So it's, it's done in a variety of ways. We think that the approach that we have with this transportation element, functionally operating as the TMP is the best approach for us, given, as Scott mentioned, the ability that we have to be more specific and actionable and robust on some of these items. And, and like we're going to talk about in a few minutes here with the transit plan, building in a lot of that data and policy into the comp plan update and building out a more comprehensive project list. So those are all envisioned to be part of the transportation element and, and will give us what we would have gotten out of a TMP.
So would it be possible for us to get like an outline of what that looks like? So we can have that same warm fuzzy that you have that says this is the same thing?
Absolutely. And, and Councilmember, to your point, I think that we've done a lot of, in the last week and a half, we've spent a lot of time on pulling this together. And part of the reason that we wanted to have Audrey do the public works update prior to Doug doing the transit plan presentation is so that we put the context around what the, what part the transit plan plays, I can't even speak, in this broader context. Because it is a little bit confusing and challenging. The bottom line is we feel that doing all this work will give us a very robust transportation element of the comp plan, which we would then use functionally as the transportation master plan.
I love it. And I want to feel that way too.
Yeah, no, no, and I, I understand that. So, so we are ruling that out tonight, if you will. There's lots more to come on this. I think that we wanted to provide that context again because Doug is going to be talking about the transit plan scope. And we want to make sure that council understands and is comfortable moving forward with that because we are now sort of stacked up in timeline. And if you'll recall, and again, I'm stealing Doug's thunder, so Doug, I'm going to apologize to you here, that as part of when council chose to change directions on the optionality of the EIS last year, part of what we followed up with was we need to do these other pieces regardless to build to the comp plan. So these are those pieces. And we feel like we're in a good position now because council has clearly identified their goals. And so now we can build those into the work that we're doing. And that will be reflected in what comes out in the final comp plan element. But more in, I appreciate your point about getting it in sort of in writing, if you will. So we will pull that together and bring that back to council.
Because I just want to make sure, right, that it, it really is, I like the idea of calling it a mobility master plan because it really is about being mobile. When we think about transportation, people think about some sort of a machine moving them. And I think it really is a lot more than that and making sure we have, you know, more walkability and all of those types of things. And equity is, is a big part of, you know, how we get around. If, if the only way you can get around is a car, that's not equitable, those types of things. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that. I just want to be able to kind of touch it and feel it myself if possible.
Sure, and we appreciate that. And again, that's one of the main reasons why we feel like this work is so important to do ahead of getting to the, the final pieces of the, that comp plan element. So with that, apologies, Doug.
Not at all.
You can skip half your presentation now.
Exactly.
Right, yeah, Councilmember Howe, or, yeah, sorry, yeah, just raise your hand.
Sorry, I, I didn't know you can't see any, this thing doesn't work. So I have, my first question has to do with permits and permitting. And this isn't a fair question, so I'm going to ask our city manager instead. Because we had, we had public comment a couple of times from the same individual. It was very polite and he was clearly very frustrated because he'd had trouble getting permits and had found it extremely difficult. And I was looking at your slide, Audrey, and it's clear you've done a lot of permitting. And I know that this doesn't really fall in your, may, or it may or may not fall in your area. But I, I don't know what the problem is that he was experiencing where he wasn't getting, people weren't cutting back to him, he wasn't able to talk to people. He felt that the permitting process, he was a developer that had actually developed reasonably sizable properties. I'm not talking about adding a porch. So this may or may not sound familiar. I see David Pyle slowly, slowly transitioning to the podium. Perhaps you have insight.
I will start it off to give a little bit of context. There are times when people want to walk in the door and get someone's attention. And we are not set up that way on purpose.
Right.
Because we, in the past, we have given advice and talked through things with people and then they've done things and come back and said, you denied my permit. You said, and so we don't do that anymore. If people want the professional advice of our staff, you have to actually get in the process. You have to have an open, an open case file and you have to pay for the service of the staff as part of your permitting process. So with that, I will turn it over to David.
No, that's very well summarized, Scott. Thank you. I don't know if there are any follow-up questions. The individual was Upeender Dinsa, who I've worked with extensively over the years, great guy to work with.
Right.
He liked the old style of City Hall where you could show up to the front counter, talk to a staff person for 45 minutes. And meanwhile, the taxpayers are paying the bill.
I got you.
We've changed our practices significantly where we do, we do look very closely at the, the level of service. And we do offer a, a service that is free, which is called a project guidance service. However, in order for us to track customers, as, as the city manager was indicating, in order for us to develop statistics to understand what, what people are interested in, in getting information on, we do ask that they submit their requests through a portal. And then we do follow up on them. What he was referencing was that, that there were not staff that were just available for him to call up to the counter and talk, talk too casually over the counter anymore. And we just don't have the budget for that and, and we're not providing that level of service.
You know, thank you for that because that just, when you hear it as a council person, you hear it a couple of times. And I didn't have a good way to follow up. So this is a way for me to close that loop for myself and also to get it onto the public record about this is how we do things. And it's an efficient way to do it so that we don't have to have more staff than we need. So I appreciate the explanation. I did have a couple more questions. Has to do with the traffic cameras and the data that you're pulling from that. I wondered if there was software that would do some optical recognition so that you're able to potentially marry up the visual with the, with the traffic as we measure traffic. So that you're able to understand, okay, it's not just a number. You actually know what that traffic was as it came through. Because there's, there is software, I believe, that would do that. And I wondered if that would give you a more comprehensive view potentially of what kind of traffic we have when we are doing a measurement period in specific. So that was just a question and I'm not expecting an immediate answer for something like that. But I'm hoping that we have the capacity to, to do some smarts around, I guess. The information that we're getting is that it's not just transitory. The other question I had had to do with the actual standards that use the solar panels that don't work, which I really wish they did. So I'm delighted you're working on those. That's awesome. I wondered if you were looking at, in terms of speed limits, potentially having signs that did change based on traffic conditions. So that would require that the solar panels actually performed, you know, exceptionally well. But I'm curious, as you look at, at speed limits and, and things of that nature, to have it be condition dependent. So there may be times when we're faster and there are times when we're slower due to the traffic studies that we've seen, you know, that, you know, sometimes going slower gets throughput faster. Is that something that's a possibility?
Potentially, the, the starting point though is, is really assessing speed citywide, right? And, and really the, the focus of this effort is really based on safety and also figuring out those, those areas of the city where we're seeing well beyond speeds above the 85th percentile on a consistent basis. And what types of things could we recommend to put in there? It may be a, a potential change in signage. It may be traffic calming measures, you know, different, different types of things. But we need the, a little bit more of the, the data and analysis first.
And the last question I have has to do with schools. So I know that you said something about, and it flashed by fast about just, you know, managing, you're doing a, a school traffic study. Am I wrong or am I? Okay, so as you, as you probably know, Eastlake is changing their start time. It'll now coincide very closely to Eastside Catholics. It'll now coincide very closely to Eastside Catholics. Is there, is there anything we can do about that? And is there a way we can mitigate for that? So I'm assuming you guys know that. It was interesting, because when I talked to Eastside Catholic, they actually had trouble getting Lake Washington to kind of confirm that that was what they were actually doing. So it seems like the information or communication isn't maybe going to everywhere it needs to go. Not that that's your responsibility, but I just thought I would point that out.
Thank you, that's appreciated. Oh, Doug, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I can jump in and answer, at least to the best of my ability. So thank you, councilmember Howe. We understand the importance of the schools and the school traffic to the city of Sammamish and our operations on our roads. We meet every other month with all the school districts, including Eastside Catholic. And so we try to coordinate as best we can. In between those meetings, we have email correspondence and sometimes phone correspondence.
Are you meeting them all together? Are they all together in the same room? Okay, so they're all hearing each other. Okay, great, thanks.
Yes, with all of us, too. Audrey attends, we have several staff members that attend. We do take it very seriously. The short answer for controlling start and, you know, the bell times is that it's very difficult. The city has almost no authority in that realm. And we've talked to the schools before plenty of times. They have a lot of considerations that they have to make for their bell times. It includes, you know, teacher contracts, bus availability, bus driver availability, all kinds of factors. And it's much more complex than what we might assume on face value. And that's the answer that we've received from all of the district counterparts. So we always talk to them about that. We try to make sure that they coordinate. Our traffic engineering manager, Linda Salha, is always on those meetings, and she's the one that they go to with operational concerns. So I think it's fair to say that we'll keep an eye on the situation. We will make sure that we're talking with the districts in very specific terms about this and making sure that if there are any issues that arise, we can address those.
Thank you, because it's, I mean, we know it's going to be a problem. And when you already know it's going to be a problem, it becomes a task of communication and setting expectations. And so I think that that's something that would be helpful potentially, is to set expectations with parents and students. Life isn't going to go smoothly. This is what you could do, parent, student, that would make lives easier. And, you know, it presents some potential scenarios or solutions of how we could, you know, have this just work better. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Audrey, for that wonderful presentation. And I think doing the quarterly updates was something probably that came from the city manager. So thank you, Scott, for having all the departments do the quarterly update. I think that's going to be very useful for all of us, and not just us, but also for residents who watch these meetings or want to learn about the city. My question was, I think in my Sammamish, she showed some data on what the average time is to close in a ticket that comes in. My question there was, do you have an S L A for that? Have you established that as a team? Is that something that we constantly want to improve? Or, you know, reduce sort of the wait time?
Yeah, so part of that is that data, the acknowledgement, is each requester receives an acknowledgement that is automatically sent to them. It also just makes sure that, you know, kind of that reassurance that yes, indeed, the request was actually submitted, we received it. In terms of the average days to close, it can really vary depending on the issue. And so we are working on making sure that we can provide timely status updates for those issues that may linger for a little bit longer. A good example of those is actually a traffic safety issue. So if we get a request that someone is concerned about speeding in their neighborhood, we actually coordinate with the police department, and it takes a few weeks to go through and set up some of those preliminary engineering studies just to see, first of all, if speeding is occurring. And then if, once we have that data, then we go ahead and take a look at maybe some possible options to mitigate some of that on a localized level. So some of those requests take weeks, weeks to go through and close. But it's throughout that process that we go through and make sure that there's, like I said, updates to some of those requests.
Great, thank you. And I did like your three D house building image and then how you walked us through. So, you know, it does really come together, I think. You know, when we're talking about schools, when you're talking about transportation, mobility, it does. So it was really useful and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other, go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation, Audrey. I just had a quick question on the striping, road striping program. I haven't heard of that before. Is that something that happens yearly? And how does that, I guess, very simply, how does that happen? Like, do we send out engineers, they reassess the entire city? Or just like in broad strokes, could you help me with that?
Sure, and that's a great question. So thank you, Deputy Mayor. That has shifted quite a bit in years past. This team is really taking a second look at that and making sure that we're, as we're looking at budgets, too, that we have our roads marked in the best way possible. And there's, like anything else, it's very complicated, but making sure that we do an assessment on the roadway markings. So that's done early in the spring and completed so that we can put our work orders into King County Road Services. They actually are a provider for our road striping. They do, there's two formats. Like I said, the, you know, we've seen the yellow and the white lane striping. And like anything else, like I said, it's very complicated. We have to go through and make sure it's meeting M U T C D and a whole lot of different requirements for, there's a new requirement, actually, that's coming out for reflectivity, so we're looking at some of that work. But ideally, that work is assessed in early spring. It's, some of our road marking wears differently, depending on patterns as well as the type of winter we just had. So how much the snow and ice, you know, program may have just affected our road marking. So to summarize, it's done, for the most part, annually, at least our assessment. And then each road may be striped annually, depending on its condition and road classification as well.
Thank you. So it's really the, like, the priority roads that get assessed first and so forth and downward?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
All right, anybody else? Cool, all right. I guess we will move right along to unfinished business. I believe you have some, maybe consultants jumping on, but I'll pass it to you, Audrey and Doug.
Yes, we do, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Audrey Sarsky, interim Public Works Director, and will be actually just taking off this presentation tonight. We do have two members from our consulting team that are just joining us, and they will be supporting us through this wonderful transportation, I'm sorry, transit plan. And with that, I will hand the baton to Doug.
Thank you, Audrey. I just want to make sure everyone can see my screen. Might be having some trouble here. Can everyone see the presentation slide?
Yeah.
Good, okay, perfect, perfect, thank you. Thank you, Audrey. Doug McIntyre, Senior Transportation Planning Manager with Public Works. We are very excited to talk to you tonight about the transit plan. We actually have some guests with us, and they are on the screen. So I will get to the slide where they get introduced in a second. But so tonight's purpose is, again, to introduce key members of our consultant team. We are going to provide an overview of the Sammamish Transit Plan, the scope of work, what fits into the other city efforts, and then our plan for community engagement. And then there is an ask of council, which is to approve the consulting contract. So I'd like to introduce D K S Associates. They were, through a competitive R F P process, selected as the best firm that we interviewed. We interviewed three firms, and they were selected for their exceptional experience, their local reputation, as well as their national reputation. And just from top to bottom, we were very impressed. Their community engagement proposal was very robust. So we're very excited. And with that, I'll introduce Sarah Keenan and Winthana Miller. Sarah is the project manager, and Winthana is the principal in charge. Would you like to say a few words, Sarah and Winthana?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. Hi, everyone. As Doug mentioned, I'm Sarah Keenan with D K S Associates. My role on the transit plan project will be project manager. And just a little bit about me, my background is in transportation planning and engineering. A pretty wide background in transportation, including course transit. I've worked on transportation elements and transportation management, or T M Ps, transportation master plans, as well as traffic impact fees, some design, including signals and R F Bs. And I worked on the Sammamish On Call just about a year and a half ago. And I did a lot of that C Click Fix website work that Audrey was talking about. And Winthana?
Thanks, yeah, I'm Winthana Miller. I'm a principal with D K S here in our Seattle office. I, on this project, I'll serve as basically a principal in charge, so I'm just here to support Sarah and make sure that she has everything that she needs in order to deliver this project for the city of Sammamish. And of course, the support Doug as well, making sure the city is getting what they need for this project. Sarah and I are working together on Issaquah's transit plan right now. So we can, we're able to bring that experience to this project as well. My, I've worked in this area for over fifteen years, really doing a wide range of things, but transit is kind of one of my specialty areas. D K S has worked with King County Metro and Sound Transit for the twenty years that we've been in this market. So I'm excited to bring that experience to Sammamish and this project. And yeah, excited, excited to work with you all on getting this, getting this project done.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Winthana. Like I mentioned, we're very excited about working with D K S, not only just the local experience, but everything, top to bottom. So with that, I will move on to more of the substantive slides here. And I just want to make sure everyone can still see my screen. Is that correct? Okay, I'm getting nervous here. Okay, so we want to root this work in a couple, like, main conceptual educational elements here. So one is, why are we doing a transit plan? As you all know, the city of Sammamish has grown quite rapidly over the last decade plus, and that comes with some challenges. It comes with some opportunities and constraints. But, you know, the challenges relate to congestion. How do we move around? How do we get to where we need to go? And through the transit plan, we plan to identify some of those challenges and really tackle them. Opportunities and constraints for transit. We've known anecdotally that there are opportunities and constraints out in the city, but this plan will really give us hard data. It will give us really specific strategies. It will give us really actionable items that we can implement. So it's very much overdue. It's something that we need to get done so that we can progress forward. Additionally, we want to be able to implement these improvements. So there's going to be short term and long term strategies that come out of this. There's going to be some low hanging fruit. There's going to be some longer term projects. So we need to know exactly what those are and exactly what that means for us to invest in. And then ultimately, and probably most importantly, is that this work is going to be filming out our transportation element of the comp plan in terms of the transit work. We're going to get really specific policy language out of this, and like I said, actionable items. And that's all we're going to feed into the transportation element, which, as we mentioned earlier, is going to be kind of that functional transportation master plan. So what is a transit plan? This is the other kind of foundational piece we want you to leave this presentation with. It's at its core, just a comprehensive way of understanding how we serve Sammamish residents with transit, and how can that be improved to meet not only today's needs, but the needs of the future. And just again, as a high level thing, there's three main elements of this plan. There's a transit service component, where we're talking about existing service and future service. There's a capital component of the plan, where we will identify some prioritized investments. And again, the short term and long term implementation strategies for that. And then policy, as I mentioned, that's probably the most important part of this, informing our transportation elements of the comprehensive plan update. So a little context, and we have, as Scott mentioned, you did kind of cover a lot of this here in the previous conversation. But it's a really important understanding context. And when you first look at the slide, it might not seem like these are all connected. But I've talked about this for years in terms of spider web, all the things that we do. It's, they're all interconnected, right? If you, if you change a piece of that web, or you move a piece of the web, the whole thing adjusts to respond to that change. And I think it's a really good way to think about where we're at and how we got here. So it actually has roots in the T M P. And again, T M P stands for the Transportation Master Plan. It was actually started in two thousand and seventeen, and then officially halted in two thousand and twenty. And that work, there was a focus on transit. It was not very robust, as Scott had mentioned earlier. It did have some basic elements. There was some analysis there, and there were some projects that we identified. But it wasn't, it wasn't near the level that this transit plan would get for us. So just, just so you know, it is rooted in the T M P. And then the T M P morphed into the BLOOM A I S, and BLOOM A stood for Balanced Land Use and Mobility Analysis. And of course, the E I S is the environmental impact statement. That began in two thousand and twenty, right after the T M P was halted. And then it was finished officially in July of two thousand and twenty-two with the passage of Resolution R two thousand and twenty-two nine sixty, which is that third bullet on the slide. And that directed staff to pursue a transit plan, among other transportation planning efforts. But that was really our work plan coming out of that. And this was very clear that this was a need. And so it has relation to both the BLOOM A I S and the T M P. And of course, the final bullet there is that we want to make sure we align more specifically with council goals. Those were adopted in August, and specifically, goal number seven is transportation, and project number one is the transit plan. So this is something that we know council wants and the city needs. And so it is definitely our goal to make it the best we can. So I stole this slide from Audrey, as you'll recall. And this is important, I think, because it shows, again, just that relationship. It's kind of building on that spider web analogy in the sense that these are all interconnected, especially when you look at the whole comprehensive plan and other topic areas. You know, land use decisions affect transportation decisions. And so in that list on the side, we just want to make sure that we are reflecting council goals, council vision, city vision for transportation, and then building in all these elements. That's really going to make our transportation elements robust, going to be actionable. It's going to give us essentially our work plan for the ten year window following adoption in two thousand and twenty-four. And then again, just to reemphasize the fact that the transportation elements collectively will be the functional component of the T M P. And then one thing I wanted to mention here is, we did get a couple of questions before this presentation from council. And one of them was about existing comprehensive plan and kind of aligning with that work as opposed to, you know, really diving into the new comprehensive plan work. And so again, we're kind of in that middle ground, where we have an existing plan, which we legally have to be consistent with. But also, we're working on updating all that. We're trying to be more progressive, more specific, more action oriented. So it is both. It is, you know, aligning with the existing comprehensive plan, because that is what we have today adopted on the books. But it is very much about setting the stage for the future, diving into everything that we can do to improve our transit service going into the future. So just wanted to make sure we clarified that. And then this slide, this builds off of that three component idea. So this kind of gets at the scope of work. So we have, again, the service planning area, the capital planning area, and the policy planning area. And under each of those main elements are the different task items that are in the scope of work for D K S. So the existing conditions report is kind of the first thing out the gate. We need to know, what do we have? What are the different policies and plans that affect transit in Sammamish? What are the things that we need to be aware of to understand the opportunities and constraints? We then also will work on level of service measures for transit. And that's something that, you know, we are really excited about. The city does not have that right now. We can look at a variety of ways to do this, and that will come clear through community engagement, as well as the development of the draft plan. But we can look at, you know, service, sorry, potential ridership in a certain walk shed, quarter mile walk shed, that kind of thing. And then the third bullet there is the planned transit network, which I think is really important for us to kind of identify, what is the future transit going to look like in the city? Where's the growth that's happening? How can we serve that growth? So that is absolutely part of the plan. For capital, we're looking at all the things that we can do as a city to support transit. That would be things like, you know, sidewalks, connectivity to transit stops. It might be changing the way that transit stops look, providing shelters for those transit stops. You know, lighting, all kinds of different things that we can do and control as a city that maybe King County Metro might not be involved in. And then also identifying the barriers and recommending how we can improve access to transit. And then the really cool thing about this is that we'll have a planning level cost estimates through one of the sub consultants on the team, engineering sub consultant, which I think is really important to be very specific and implementable, so that we know the extent of the investment that's needed. Finally on the screen is the policy side of it. Again, just reemphasizing that there's going to be a lot of policy work and really informing that comprehensive plan update and helping us implement all these transit strategies. And another piece of the scope work is an equity analysis. And I'll get into all these in a little bit more detail here in a second. But want to show on the right of the screen, which is that the community engagement we're going to embark upon is really the underpinning of all of this. It covers everything. So again, with the service planning, the existing conditions report, we're going to be So, um, again, uh, with the service planning, uh, the existing conditions report, we're going to be, uh, summarizing all the existing plans and, and documents, and everything that we need to know to be able to start working on solving the problems. Uh, demographics is a part of that, and, uh, so we'll be looking at a lot of different. Level of service measures, I, I alluded to this earlier, but we're going to be looking at how we measure performance, um, and, and understanding the effect of this on our transit. Um, and then again, the Plan Transit Network is, uh, really important to understand how we grow and how we, uh, serve, serve that growth in the city. The capital side of it, uh, I've kind of already covered these, but, um, you know, essentially, we're going to be, what are the short-term and long-term, uh, capital budgets that we need to plan for and build into our six-year capital list? Uh, as well as potentially the twenty-year capital list, to make sure that we are investing in getting people to transit, to better serve our community and help people get to where they need to go. Um, and then again, the, the policy side, uh, what are the gaps that we need to, uh, fill in from our policy framework? And, um, uh, with the equity analysis, identifying, uh, all the underserved communities and what are their needs. There are a lot of people that do rely on transit in Sammamish, and we need to really understand what does that look like, and that needs to span the whole, uh, cross-section of the community. Um, one of the slides I wanted to leave you with was about community engagement, that's always a very important thing in Sammamish. Um, our, I think it's always important to understand what the goals are, and it's sort of where we're headed. Definitely one of the biggest things is understanding the barriers to people not being able to use transit. What are the things that we can, we can understand from our community, you know, very direct input from them, to help us understand what these barriers are? Um, of course, with any engagement effort, we want to make sure we reach as many people as we can and reduce the barriers to engagement. Um, and that's where some of the tools on the right will come in. There's also an, an element of education that's built into this. We do know that there are varying levels of understanding of transit, just in general, uh, all across the region. Some people think that the city operates transit, which is, uh, not the case. And so, uh, we just want to make sure that we are being very, um, you know, upfront and, uh, informative with our engagement. Um, and then, of course, as is always the goal with community engagements, that you want to make sure you build a plan that actually reflects that. We don't want to be placating anybody, we don't want to be dismissing anybody, we want to make sure that we really, uh, synthesize the data that we get and inform our community. Um, and then the tools that we're going to use to get there, uh, technical advisory committee, that's, uh, people made up of experts in the region. Think of, uh, representatives from Metro, Sound Transit, um, King County, the school districts, uh, you know, a variety of folks that really have some expertise that can help us, um, make a really good plan and help us, uh, refine the plan. We're also looking at doing a community advisory committee, that would be made up of community members who, uh, have specific interests or expertise in transit. We know that there's, um, a lot of knowledge out there, and so how can we embrace that and bring that into our plan? Also, a big component of this is a statistically valid survey, or otherwise known as an SDS. Um, and that is really good, because it gives us objective, uh, data to be able to say with, with a, a level of certainty what the community wants. Um, so that's going to be a really big component of what we do. Um, there's also going to be online and in-person open houses, one of, one each, uh, both online and in-person. Um, that, again, hopefully reduces some barriers to people participating. Uh, we're going to have an online mapping tool, which will host, and, um, that will be really cool, that, again, just kind of that two-way communication, that kind of always accessible, you know, tool that people can use. They go to a meeting, and then they think of something afterwards, they can come on to the mapping tool and help us, um, identify constraints or opportunity. And then, uh, that's all, uh, with any good planning effort, you always want to, uh, summarize what you heard from the community and report back. I think it's really important, it's sometimes gets, uh, missed, uh, but it's always important to tell the community what you heard. So with that, um, the request for the council tonight is to approve the contract with DKS, which is Exhibit One in the agenda packet. Um, and then, uh, you know, we'll pretty much kick it off, uh, really soon here, we're going to start community engagement, um, in the, in, in April, um, and then begin development of the transit study. At the bottom of the screen here is a really rough conceptual transit schedule, there's a more specific schedule in the exhibit. But, uh, yeah, with that, I will leave you with a sample motion, and then we can talk about questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Howe?
I would love to move to approve this, because this is phenomenal, I don't want to cut off questions, however, but I just think this is exactly what we need. My only question actually had to do with something about approach, which is, uh, Doug, have you provided, uh, any bumpers or guardrails about don't come up with a big idea that we can't possibly implement, or can't afford, or did you leave it as, no, we want to hear everything and then distill down what we think we can handle? That's a question.
It's a good question, yeah, you know, anytime you go out to the community, there's all kinds of ideas that get thrown out there. And, uh, I know from experience with the TMP, when we did a really robust, uh, engagement effort with that, we heard all kinds of ideas, and there are some really good ones out there. I don't think that we ever want to say, no, that's not a good idea, um, I think there's always merit to, uh, all the ideas. So what I've done in the past is, we record everything we get verbatim, and I track it, and I keep it in a gigantic spreadsheet, and then, uh, we report back on it. And usually, that's like an appendix to the, to the outreach summary. But, uh, no, I don't think we want to be saying, uh, you know, putting limits on what people can provide as their input, I think it's much better to hear all the ideas.
I think we have questions, yeah, Councilmember Trine?
Is that right? Yeah, I didn't, if there was a motion, I didn't want to overstep on a motion, so. So, the planning period for this transit study, co- is it coincide with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
The framework and vision, tell me a little bit more about what you, because you bring that up about there's a framework and a vision. Vision for transit, or the vision for the city, or, and the framework, is that the framework of the transit plan, or is it the framework of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, good question, so, um, when we talk about vision, uh, in this, in this case, we're mostly, mostly talking about the transportation vision. Uh, we want to be a multimodal, um, provide opportunities for multimodal transportation. Uh, when we talk about, uh, framework, uh, I think we're referring to, uh, the comprehensive plan and the policies in the comprehensive plan that relate to transportation, uh, of which transit is a large part of that. So hopefully that kind of gives you a sense, but yeah, it's, it's usually typically when we say those things, um, with regard to transportation, in this case, the transit plan.
Yeah, because I understand, I understand the transportation element portion of our comprehensive plan. So one of the other things are, you, uh, you talked about level of service. Uh, will the consultant be looking at, uh, level of service at intersections and corridors, or just intersections? How are they going to look at our level of service?
Yeah, that's a great, great question, and I probably should have been a little bit more specific. You can actually have level of service for a variety of different things. Um, you're correct that we do have intersection level of service for, uh, our road system. Um, the level of service that we talk about with regard to the transit plan is about accessing transit. Um, so, so how do we measure that performance with regard to transit service? Um, so not necessarily confining ourselves to anything, any other topic areas. So, you know, an example might be, um, uh, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but, uh, you know, ridership, uh, or, or a number of potential riders within, uh, say, a walk shed, a quarter-mile walk shed of the, um, uh, transit spine. Um, there's, there's a variety of ways you can do it, uh, and we're, we're going to be exploring that through this process. But, uh, yeah, definitely specific to transit.
And a couple of times you mentioned, Doug, about the, uh, actionable items. Help me understand, I think I know what it means, but when you say it, what do you, what is a consultant and staff expecting from, what are those actionable items?
Yeah, and the reason why I say that is because, um, we want to have a transit plan that we can implement. That is going to give us a, essentially a work plan to just tick off the list and go through and say, okay, we're going to do this now, we're going to do that. We need to be specific in that regard, and we need, it needs to be backed up by the data and the community engagement. So, though, all that's going to work together to give us some strategies that we can act on. What I think has happened in the past is, you know, we have a transportation element that, uh, is, was originally adopted in twenty fifteen, uh, it's been amended. But, uh, it, it lacked, in, in my opinion, it lacks some really specific actions that we could take. It had relatively vague statements, um, and so, you know, vague is okay in some regards. Uh, but we want to have really actionable language in the transit plan, to be able to say, okay, now we know what we're going to do, you know, next quarter, next year, that kind of thing.
Okay, so here's my challenge then with, uh, well, besides the price tag, two hundred thousand dollars, because I'm already paying three, we're paying a lot of money for our comprehensive plan update already. You're going to throw in another two hundred thousand dollars, and here's where my confusion lies, is is the two hundred thousand dollars for a transit plan?
Yes.
So that's what the consultants are going to, one of the things the consultants are going to deliver, uh, an actionable item would be delivered, a transportation action plan. And would show how people are moving on transit, can you, is there a definition, can somebody give me a definition of transit?
Yeah, so typically, when we're referring to transit, we're, uh, and, and it does vary, so it is, it is a good question. You know, if you're in Seattle, you're, you've got light rail, you've got bus transit, you have, uh, options. In Sammamish, what transit has meant historically is, uh, a couple of bus routes, and we do have some alternative transit, which are the shuttles and the vans that King County Metro operates. So there are different types of transit. Um, and, uh, in Sammamish, we historically have not had a lot of it. Uh, it's been sort of just a couple of bus routes on two twenty.
So the transit plan is going to give me two-twenty-eighth northbound and southbound, correct?
Uh, it's actually going to look at a future network, so we will look at where growth is happening, and where we do want to serve, um, other parts of the city with transit. So it will be beyond, uh, the needs by that.
Okay, thank you. Last, last question is, uh, this, um, what, what's the consultant's, uh, plan, and maybe, this is directly really for the consultant's, uh, a valid survey? Tell me what your definition, or what you're planning to do to provide to the council data that is a valid survey? Because I imagine that's costing you about twenty thousand dollars, maybe thirty thousand dollars to actually do a valid survey, so a tenth of your, uh, the expense to the taxpayers is a valid survey. So give me a little indication that I'm going to get my, an actual valid survey, haven't seen one in three years in the city, so, would like to see one.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so what we mean, a, a statistically valid survey is, um, a scientific approach to conducting a survey, so that you can draw conclusions from the data that you receive from responses, and provide a level of confidence to that analysis. So I know that that probably didn't mean a whole lot, but, um, essentially what we're going to do is, we're going to survey a subset of the Sammamish population, and it's going to be at a certain number, such that the responses that we get will give us, um, hard data about, to draw conclusions about what people in the city want to see for, uh, transit in Sammamish, and, and also about the barriers that prevent them from using transit. So we will design questions with a reputable, uh, consultant, and, uh, make sure that the, the questions are being asked in a scientific way, such that we can, uh, synthesize the data once we get responses, uh, and draw conclusions.
So my, I, I, no way I can vote for this as a positive. Doug, you don't need a subset, you need to, you need to survey the whole city, that's twenty-two thousand households, maybe twenty-three thousand with the businesses as well. And you could literally survey the whole house, uh, city with, like, similar to what we're doing with our newsletter, and you could literally get a valid survey from the whole city. So there, there's a lot of, um, for me, at least, there's a lot of questions about why we would spend two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to do a study on transit, when we can already answer some of these questions that have been presented with the information that we've already gathered over the years. So at this point, I am, and no, um, uh, no, clearly, thanks.
Councilmember Nupurri?
Thank you, Doug, um, since, um, a question about, um, the budget was brought up, I, this was accounted for in the budget, right?
Yes.
That's correct, this was a planned item in the budget.
Right, thank you for clarifying that. So, um, I know there, there was a talk about, you know, what is the definition of transit? And I think what I would like to understand is, when we look at the, the transit plan, are we looking to move folks from Sammamish to where they work? Or also, are we thinking about, there are many people who come into Sammamish to work, um, are we looking at that as well? And then, um, Doug, I think you mentioned, you know, we have metro, we have those community rides. We also have actually, you know, shuttles that come from companies, that I know Microsoft, Amazon runs their shuttle, is that also considered as part of transit? And then, um, would potentially like LimeBikes or something like that, you know, electric scooters, does, would that fall into the transit plan? Because, uh, I think what I'm asking is, you know, would there be a potential for public-private partnerships in relation to that plan?
Yeah, that's a good question. So when we think about things like the electric scooters and the, the ride, the, the micro-mobility, um, the shared mobility, uh, that's, that's typically a sort of a separate effort, except for where it overlaps in terms of access to transit. So, um, you know, access to transit is going to be a part of this plan, um, how do we get people to transit stops and to parking rines? Uh, so, uh, that is definitely part of it. And you, you mentioned the private employer shuttles, um, I think that's, uh, you know, something that we'll need to put our heads together with our DKS counterparts, and see how we can get that data and, and, uh, you know, look at the impacts, uh, to the community, and, and potentially opportunities, like you said, for the opportunities that are for our community. But I, I think we need to do some, uh, talking internally.
Great, also I have a very quick question, I know our consultants had the, like, the initials PE at the end of their name, what does a PE stand for?
I, I am not a PE, so PE is a professional engineer, uh, I'm a planner, so, uh, I have none of that technical background. So I, I know it's very difficult to attain, um, and I know Winthana has a, in addition to PE, PTOE, which is even harder, I think, so I'll let them, I don't know if they want to say anything about that.
I can define the PTOE, it's a professional traffic operations engineer, so it's just another, uh, certification that's kind of focused on, on operations in general. So doing, you know, daily traffic stuff, which is really what, what I do day-to-day, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
And the important thing about a PE is that they are licensed, and it's, uh, very hard to obtain that.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Hi, everyone, I just had, um, maybe one, two quick questions. When we're talking about transportation, I know we were talking about how people get in and out of Sammamish, are we also talking about how people get around Sammamish? I have, yeah, in my family, we use, we used to use the community, um, service, which is now today called Metro Flex. Um, and we have the little vans that are going around, those cool little white vans that have purple and pink on the back of them, so it's now Metro Flex. So are we talking about how we get around Sammamish, and is it only on public transportation? Or are we also kind of looking at our road network around Sammamish, and how we all connect from the north to the south and in and around, will that be part of it? And then also, the, just a little tag on to that, how then our residents are going to access the light rail system as it comes on stream at Marymore? Will that also be kind of a consideration?
Yeah, I'll take that second part first, so, um, access to the light rail system is hugely important for the city of Sammamish. Um, there are some things in the works, uh, that King County Metro is working on to, uh, do a better job of getting people to, uh, for instance, the southeast Renon Station that is going to come online at the end of twenty twenty-four. And, uh, yes, so that is, that is a big part of, uh, how Sammamish connects to the region through transit. Um, a lot of our, uh, bus stops, or sorry, bus routes will, um, not go much further than, uh, the, the Renon Station, Light Rail Station, or the Mercer Island, uh, Light Rail Station. So, um, that's, that's really the new model for how bus transit works in conjunction with light rail. Uh, so that will be part of this. Um, and then your first question was about, um, uh, connectivity and other ways that we get around the city within the city. So I, I would say indirectly, yes, um, the, the real important piece for this transit plan is, um, how do people get to a transit stop? And so that, with regard to our roadway network, is really focused on sidewalks, bike lanes, that kind of thing. You know, the access from somebody's neighborhood to, say, the South Sammamish Parking Rite, how can they get there? And so that's, that's definitely part of this. But some of the larger connectivity issues in the city, um, are probably not going to be as big in this transit plan, but they will be something we talk about in the transportation element.
Did you have something? No, go ahead, I'm always last, yeah.
No, go ahead, I'm always last, yeah.
So I'm actually really happy to see this plan because, you know, with the amount of growth that the city is expected to absorb in the next couple of decades, it's really important that we have a plan in place. And of course, you know, this will affect the climate as well, having transit. I have a couple of questions, and that is, how will the citizen advisory committee, the technical advisory committee, how will those people be appointed? And I also didn't see planning commission involvement.
Yeah, so with regards to the community advisory committee, I do think we need to talk internally about that. We haven't, you know, once the consulting contract gets approved, we can kind of dive deeply into how we do the next steps. We want that to be really done, done really deliberately so that we get input from community members who have passion for transit and who have, have expertise in, in the transit field. So we will work with our, you know, communications to get the call out there and make sure that we're trying to do that pretty, pretty deliberately so that we can get some really good input. You know, we don't have a step-by-step process at the moment, but again, once we get the contract approved, we can talk with DKS and work on some of the specifics.
And the planning commission involvement?
Yes, yeah, so, so typically with a sort of like, what I would call a functional plan like this, a functional plan or a strategic plan, you know, like I'm trying to think of a comparison. So, you know, if we were to the Transportation Capital Improvement Program, so that is a functional piece of how we operate as a public works department, so that typically does not go to, through the planning commission. The planning commission is, you know, will, will cover our transportation element. And to the extent that we have the transit policies in place, that, those will go through our planning commission through that transportation element process. And so, you know, it, it, there, there is an interfacing with planning commission at that point with the transportation element. Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah, that answers it. I just had another quick question, is that this is like a future network plan, so to speak. How does Town Center fit into this? You know, Town Center will be a really important part of this plan. But a lot of, you know, I, I see what's happening in Town Center is a little bit in flux, so to speak. Like, we don't know what housing is going to look like, or how much, or commercial. And so how does that, how does a plan like this fit into Town Center, which is a little abstract right now?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, obviously, the Town Center is a growth area of the city. It's planned to accommodate a certain amount of population growth. And that is, you know, I don't think we need really specific data about, you know, where, which houses are going to go in Town Center. It's more about that population growth in that part of the city. I think that is most important. So, you know, transit is, is going to serve as many people as it can. It's, it's kind of a numbers game. And it's going to try not to deviate too much off of, off of any, you know, main, main routes. Because I think that, you know, it's, it's a little bit more efficient when you can be more direct from A to point B. But we do want to be able to serve those growth areas and get more people on, on transit and out of a single-occupant vehicle.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. And Audrey, you know, I sent a mail over the weekend and you just said, hey, bring those questions to the meeting. So thanks for acknowledging my mail. A couple of things, there were three places in the scope of work, when I read through it, where it said that this plan will be based on the current comprehensive plan, right? So the one sentence says, the transit plan will align with the city's current comprehensive plan. And then it says, the consultant will summarize goals and policies related to transit from existing plans. And then it also says, the consultant will review existing comprehensive plan policies with respect to the analysis conducted in Task Four and propose additional policies as appropriate. So again, I think that it's much more important that this be a future-looking plan, not a backwards-looking plan. So I just want to make sure, I, I recognize that the, the new comprehensive plan doesn't totally exist yet. But if we really do this now on the old plan, like, by the time you finish this plan, the comprehensive plan, the new comprehensive plan will come only months later, so it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier that, you know, we are, we mentioned that because the goals and policies in place today are, are what are adopted. And we, we have to, you know, be in alignment with that. But the bulk of this plan is about how we build future network and how we build a better transit service for the community. So it's absolutely forward-thinking and going to be part of that transportation element. You know, a couple of the items that you mentioned are in relation to the existing conditions report. So, you know, that is really important for us to understand, what is in place today? How do the current policies affect the transit that we get in Sammamish today? And so that helps us identify opportunities in these streets. So those, those pieces are important to understand. But the bulk of this is about building a better policy framework, building a better capital plan, and getting better service in the community for the future.
So I'm confused, because if the work of this transit plan is supposed to be for the transit element of the updated comprehensive plan, why would we base it on the old plan?
So it's not, I, I don't know if I said it's being based on the old plan, but it is sort of, you know, with the policies in place today, we don't want to be, we, the work that we do is sort of, is rooted in the existing framework. We don't have anything that's adopted to do, to base it off of, or to, to inform or align with, other than what we have in the policies in the transportation element today. We're working towards the updated framework. We're working towards the new future transit network. We're working towards a new capital plan, and that's all very much part of this. But the transportation element that we have in the adopted comprehensive plan today is sort of the, the starting point, I think.
Okay, but now I'm going to come back to my TMP question. If we were creating a transportation master plan, that could be all based on the future. And the transit planning that we would do, that would go into that, wouldn't be based on the old policies. It would be based on, hey, here's how we make transit work, here's what those new policies should be. Because this needs to be forward-thinking, we're going to wrap this up in late '23 or early '24, and then we're going to turn around and adopt a brand-new comprehensive plan. And you just got finished telling us that the trans, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan is going to be our TMP. And the transit plan is part of that trans, transportation element update. So the scope of work very clearly says that this work is all going to be based on the current comp plan. That is troubling to me.
So.
So that might be.
Sorry, Doug, if I can jump in just for a quick moment, and please correct me if I go astray here. Councilmember Stewart, I appreciate it, and I definitely hear what you're saying. I think what Doug is alluding to is that, in order for our plan to be valid, we have to start with what the existing policies and plans that are in place. And right now, since the TMP was never adopted back in 2017 through 2020, what, what we have to rely on goes all the way back to the original 2014 comp plan. Now, that doesn't, I think what Doug was trying to say is that you have to start somewhere. So we build on that, and the analysis then says, how did we get to where we are? And how do we get to where we want to be moving forward? And I think, Doug, if I, if I misspeak, please jump in, but that's, that's the way I understand it to be. So you start with a, you have to baseline it somewhere, and that is what our current plan and policies state. And then the question is, what analysis do we need to do based on what we know about, like, Town Center? You know, you have to, you have to factor that in, in, as you do your analysis. So it is based on what we're looking at moving forward, not, it's not going to be, we're just going to take the existing plan and do, and drop transit over the top of it. I think it is looking at all of the pieces of what are planned moving forward, Town Center being one of the big ones. And as part of the other comp plan work, what things might we be looking at as well to try to figure out how to build the transit plan, which, as you point out, will be a big component of the transportation element slash TMP.
Right, because I see these things working hand-in-hand. And I, I thought we were going to do a trans, a transit plan as part of the comp plan update, which means that you're going to be working with, hey, if we, and I'm just making this up, but, hey, transit would work better if we had an area that had a density of X. And so if we don't plan to have an area with a density of X, that changes the types of transit that might work in a particular area. So it has to be part of all of the planning work that's going into 2024 for this to really be helpful for us.
And, and I think that we would agree, we agree with that. I think that's the, the point. And again, Doug and, and team, correct me if I'm wrong. And, and if the scope is unclear, then we need to make it clear, but that, that is the whole approach.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Scott, that is, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because the scope of work says this. So I used to be a consultant, and when I'm a consultant, what I do is what's written in the scope of work. So I just want to make sure that we're actually creating a planning document that is a plan for the future, not a transit plan for a comp plan that will have a shelf life of like 30 seconds after this transit plan is done.
No, absolutely, that, that is, that is, there would be, to your point, no point in, in doing that work.
Okay. I also want to call out, when you look at the, the ridership, I think it would be really great. And, and Doug, you, you might have been around, you weren't in this department, but when you worked here before. Once upon a time, Sammamish had more transit, we had more frequent bus service, and we actually had a lot more ridership. Sometimes people would have to wait for the next bus because the bus was too full. And so I would love it to, if we could kind of go back and look at some of that historic ridership and understand a little bit more about, like, why did it work better? Was it simply because we had more frequency and, and more consistency in the routes? Or was there some other thing to that? Because I know that our ridership is really low now, but it's sort of a self-fulfilling prophecy, right? If you take away the hours of operation and you reduce the frequency, you're going to have a lot fewer riders. And now we've eliminated all weekend service, so really, nobody can live here without a car. Because unless you're not planning to ever leave your house on the weekends and go anywhere, you have to have a car, right? And once you go ahead and you invest in a car, you're probably not going to ride the bus as much anymore. So I just, I think that's really important. You also said that, it also says that the consultant will be evaluating the percent of households within a quarter of a mile. Aren't there measures for half a mile, too? Like, shouldn't we look at, at how many are within a quarter of a mile, and also how many are within a half a mile? Or is, is the data that people will really only take the bus if they live within a quarter of a mile?
Yeah, that's a good question, and so I did check on this. And, you know, a quarter mile is best practice, it's, it's what's being used typically now. That's roughly a five-minute walk, and that's roughly the extent that people will walk to transit, from what I understand. There are certainly, you know, other things that we could do, but in this case, that was sort of pulled from best practice.
Okay, and then are we going to look at where routes would work best only with existing conditions? Or will we also be looking at, at the whole, like, what conditions would actually improve that? And again, I kind of go back to, will we be able to pull some information from this transit plan to help us inform things like our housing plan? I could see, for example, policies that say, hey, if you want people to ride the bus more, then don't build as much parking in the Town Center, right? If, if people don't have a place to park their car, then they're probably not going to buy a car, and then they'll take the bus. So there are ways that we can have policies that are not direct transit policies that can actually have a huge impact on transit, right? I love that you called out equity for the transit plan. I was thinking in your house design, there's a thing at the bottom that says connected policies. And I noticed that DEIB was not listed as, as one of the sets of policies. I think that would be awesome. And then when you're looking at the, the community groups or the action groups, again, I would love it if we could think about students and maybe even reaching out to the PTSAs. And when you're thinking about some of these things, you know, there was a, a few city managers ago who talked about where there have been cities that have worked with their school districts on having consolidated transit, right? And so when we think about, how do we get kids, you know, stop driving or being driven to school? Again, can we reduce costs with the school district by potentially having a consolidated transit plan if we look at having an intracity transit plan ourselves, right? That's something we could look at. That's also potentially pretty key, because one of the big challenges with transit now, and I think the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, is having a bus driver shortage. So having fewer different organizations trying to hire the same few bus drivers could really be helpful there. It would also be interesting, are you going to look at funding strategies as well, or just at the costs in, in this plan?
It's a good question about funding strategies. That is something kind of more global to how we implement our capital improvement plans. We, we are embarking, or going to be embarking on a long-range system completion plan. And that is meant to be much more in-depth on the financial strategies. The scope of the transit plan doesn't necessarily include that, but it will get looked at once we do that other plan in terms of, again, the financial strategies. We know that that's a big question, how do we pay for all this?
All right, because I want to do a plus-one to Councilmember Nupurri's goal of looking at, you know, partnerships. Again, if you go to the companies, if you go talk to Amazon and Microsoft, they spend a lot of money on those shuttle programs. So there is a potential there, if we can provide the service so that they don't have to, would they be willing to help us with some of that funding? Especially if we're looking at possibly having to buy additional transit. So I think that that's definitely something we should be looking at. If not in this plan in particular, at some point, we should look at that. Also, from a policy perspective, I love the Metro Flex, because it's like combining things. But again, it's still limited to what the service area is. And if you look at our city, we don't have a lot of service area on the north end of the city, right? There's this narrow strip. So is that something we can look at, is, you know, policies to potentially expand that service area? Because that Metro Flex can be key to getting people to, you know, the broader service and, and access to transit from their homes. And I think that would be really something, I don't know how possible that is, but I, I feel like that's something we really need to explore. And I did want to say yay to having your PE, that is no small feat, so that is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I move that the City Council approve the consultant services contract with DKS to begin work on the 2023 Transit Plan.
Second. All right, moved and seconded, I think, twice. I think you caught that, though. Any discussion or questions? Because I can't see hands, okay. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you so much, DKS, that's really exciting. I work for Sound Transit, so I can't wait to hear everything. And thank you so much for putting in for this, so. All right, I think a break is probably in order. I don't know if we want to do five minutes, or 10 minutes, or seven. How about 9:05, we'll be back, seven minutes? All right, yeah. Thank you, Doug, thank you, Audrey.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Are we good? Good, all right. All right, welcome back, everybody. So next, we have the 2023 City Work Plan and Objectives Resolution. I'll pass it on to Mike.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Once again, Mike Sugg, Supervising Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office, joined to my left by Lacey Lewis, Supervising Management Analyst for the Administrative Services Office. And we're here again to talk about the work plan and objectives. At your meeting two weeks ago, staff reintroduced the 2023 Work Plan and Objectives. That was first discussed at your January retreat. Council provided additional feedback at the meeting two weeks ago, and staff has made further revisions to the document. Those latest revisions are summarized in Exhibit Two of tonight's packet, which I will just briefly summarize here. The first overall change was to adjust timelines. Staff went through and updated the start and end dates of a lot of the projects, just because it's been a couple of months since we first assembled the work plan. Some of the project timelines were shifted back to quarter two, just given that we're getting close to the end of the first quarter. In addition to adjusting timelines, staff also revised some of the objectives and work plan items based on Council's comments, mostly to clarify a word or phrase, or to add a little extra detail. Overall, excuse me, overall, one new objective and one new work plan item were added, which attempted to address all of the feedback that we heard around public safety and a desire for more awareness around police data and programs. and a desire for more awareness around police data and programs. Not all feedback received was brought forward as an amendment, as some items required some further discussion or consensus. If there is consensus on additional changes tonight, council could choose to incorporate those edits via motion prior to considering approval of the resolution. One of the big questions is how are we going to measure what we're getting done? And that's where our next steps will come into play, which is really referring to the dashboard. The dashboard will show publicly where the city is on the work plan progress. It will display the status of the projects, whether they're in process, delayed, or completed, things like that. And it will link the projects to the goals and objectives that they're addressing. Residents will be able to observe the city being in progress as we complete these projects that support our goals and objectives. I'll note the dashboard won't be the most advanced reporting tool to start, but we will take our best shot and share it out with the council as soon as it's ready. There are a number of new things that we're considering here. You know, council's goals are fairly new, the objectives are brand new, and the work plan template was completely redone this year. And so I think it's important to recognize that these items won't be perfect right from the beginning, but they represent a good foundation that we can build from. Preparation for the next retreat will begin in just nine short months, at which point we can reflect on what's worked well and what hasn't, and then make changes to course correct where we need to. In your packet, as Exhibit One is a resolution to consider adoption of the work plan and objectives, pending any further direction on amendments. Additionally, we have a copy of the work plan available to pull up on the screen if that'd be helpful. And before I hand it back over to the mayor, I'd just like to ask if the city manager would like to add on to anything that I've said. Scott?
Thank you, Mike. And I just want to thank Mike and Lacey for their continued work to try to pull this together. They've put a lot of work in prior to the retreat and since then to try to be the council whisperers, to try to get at, you know, what the conversation was and to try to make sense of it. So I want to say, you know, like Mike pointed out, not everything that was discussed is in here right now. Some of it would require, in essence, for our council member to make a motion to, particularly around the objectives. If you want to change the language, I think that's going to be the best way to do it tonight, just so that we can try to get some resolution, no pun intended, on this resolution to move forward. As you might already see from some of the presentations tonight, we are working on the work plan. However, the work plan has not yet been formally adopted by council. And so it would be really great to be able to get that process started. And like Mike said, the objectives and the council goals are already set. The objectives, this is our first run at it, and I think they're pretty good. I know not all council members would agree with the exact wording of all of that. But I think that from the staff perspective, we have a pretty good idea of what you all are looking for. And hopefully, we can, you all can discuss it a little bit and give us clear direction on how to move forward. If you're ready to vote, or if you want to make some changes, then we can do that. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I think every council member provided lots of great feedback the last time we talked about this. And maybe it was our bad, but there was no ask that we kind of take a vote on those to get those updated. Other than the one change, the one addition of one objective, none of the other feedback was incorporated. And so I, like, I'm a little kind of befuddled because I feel like we spent probably over an hour giving feedback on the objectives. And I don't, I don't even know that we want to try to go through a line item, you know, amendments on all of those changes tonight. I feel like that would be a little horrifying for me. So I'm a little confused about, why did we provide all that feedback? If you needed consensus, we should have taken a vote when we were doing that. Because I know, for example, councilmember Nupure gave some really great feedback on the housing section. And I know that councilmember O'Farrell and I, and I think Deputy Mayor Lamb, all said we agreed with her feedback. And we didn't take a formal vote, but that's four. So how can we go forward? Because I sent in an email on Sunday, and I didn't get any response on, you know, kind of my list of change, feedback that I had provided, just saying, hey, here's all the feedback I provided in the meeting. None of this was incorporated. How should we go forward on this? So I don't really want to make like 27 amendment proposals. That would be scary. And the mayor might kill me, so.
Councilmember Stewart, I appreciate that. I apologize that we didn't get back to your email specifically. I know we did discuss it. I know all of you had, there was a lot of conversation. I think the question from the staff perspective ultimately is this. Are the, some of that we had a hard time synthesizing to a point where we could say, this is what it should be. And I know we've tried to do that in the past, and there was a lot of councilmembers saying, well, this word or that word. And at the end of the day, I think the question is, are the objectives correct? And if they are not, then how should we specifically change them? Because I think what we, the conclusion we came to at the staff level is, there was a lot of discussion. And when we tried to put it into words, we were not very successful. And so I want to make sure that we are capturing what all you had asked for. So we did, we added, I think it was one objective, right, Mike? And we added a work plan item as well on the safety component. Councilmember Stewart, I know you had talked about objectives for the, what's the?
High performing government.
High performing government component. And I think that piece, from my perspective, since it's not one of council's specified goals, it was just a placeholder for us for things that don't directly fall into a specific goal area. And with that in mind, I just want to remind council that the work plan, what, again, what you all received is the high level version. And there's a lot of the data based on things that we do that were not included in the work plan. So part of this is, just I'm trying to get from council, is it okay where it is? And are there glaring things that need to be changed? Or is it okay to move forward for this year? And I know we were trying to get to, and we will be following up with the actual dashboard, which will get into the, you know, the specifics of what we're measuring. And we are continuing to work on that. But in the meantime, I'm trying to get from you all, where do you think this lies? And Councilmember Stewart, I clearly hear you. And again, I apologize for not getting back on your email.
So I don't think, most of our objectives, as they're written, are not specific. They're not measurable, and they're not time bound. And so I think that's somewhat problematic. I think we are missing objectives. And I know you said the high performing government is kind of a section where you kind of put things that didn't fall in other places. But I take this kind of an exercise very seriously. We come up with goals and objectives because we have limited resources, and we need to figure out where we're going to focus those limited resources. If we have work plan items that don't align to a goal and objective, then we all have to ask ourselves, is this something we should be doing? And if we feel very strongly that this is really important, then we've probably missed a goal or objective, and we need to fix that. And if we are like, well, I think we have all our goals and objectives, and we got to go back and say, is this something we really ought to be doing? Because we shouldn't be working on stuff that doesn't align with our goals and objectives. So for me, I don't want to hold up the work plan per se. But I feel like, again, I'm not sure why we went through the exercise of providing all that feedback if we weren't going to incorporate it. And some of these things I do think are really important. And we did give other, you know, kind of wording changes and stuff. I'm sorry if, you know, we should have maybe provided that in writing the first time. That would have been helpful, but I'm struggling. And also, I know, Scott, you and I talked in one of our one on ones where, about mapping these work plan items to objectives and having a column in the work plan section so that we could see if each of these work plan items aligns to an objective, or maybe more than one. And I didn't see that either, because again, I think that's really important as well.
Appreciate it. On that last point, councilmember, we do plan on doing that in the, I'm blanking on, the dashboard. Thank you. Senior moment, apologize. We plan on doing that in the dashboard to link up those items to say what, if it meets more than one goal or objective, that we would call that out.
I mean, I'll just call out the one right here, Objective 1 dot 2, which is begin to create. And I know you modified the word, begin developing and implementing policies, procedures, and initiatives. And it kind of goes on. I still think that's too vague of an objective because if you're going to measure that, then as soon as you start, you can say, we've 100% completed it. And I know that's not really the intention of it. But if you're going to try to build a dashboard from these things, you really have to have things that are specific, measurable, and time bound so that you can show that there's progress and so that we can create that clarity to the community of what it is we intend to complete by this, from this objective, so.
Do we have other councilmembers? Councilmember Howe?
I appreciate councilmember Stewart's point because it was hard to understand if there were things that had actually changed in the document. I actually am comfortable with the document as being a 80% there, at least. If maybe not 85 or maybe not even 90, okay? And I do think that we do have to have the measurable components. And I do, you know, we will be very eager to hold ourselves all accountable to that dashboard, so that's going to be important. So we'll be continuing to look at language improvements as we can. And actually, to that end, how, you know, I know you guys took notes when we were, you know, going on for that hour. If we have additional thoughts about how, okay, now I see how this is actually working because it's in play now. We're already through first quarter. We're doing it. So as we have feedback, what would be the best way to actually deliver that? To say, aha, I figured out a way that this could be measured better. And maybe it's something that I won't get that idea until I see the dashboard, but I might have it earlier. You know, I'm having kombucha right here, so it could happen in about 10 minutes, for example. So that would help me to know how we provide, you know, additional thought on that? Or does it lock down to the extent that we can't do that? Because I don't want to change the objective. I believe in the objectives. I think that they're clear in terms of what we want to get done. So I don't want to mess with it. But if we've got feedback, how do we do that?
Well, councilmember Howe, excuse me, you're always welcome to send us feedback. I think one of the things that we'd intended on doing is, as we start to build the dashboard to come to council and talk about the components, about what are those measurable pieces? Because to be quite honest, we are going to be going into some of those work program items and trying to figure out what is the piece that you can really pull out and say, this is a quantifiable measure? Because I hear council on that one. But some of these, some of these don't do well with that unless you say, is the plan done? Yes, that's a check. And so that's a, that's a work in progress that we have not gotten to yet. And that's part of what we're going to be doing to try to get to that, exactly that component. In the meantime, if it's helpful for council, for us to come back next quarter and have this conversation and discuss how it's going, we're happy to do that. We can, we can take it in writing. I mean, again, we're happy to make, we can make the objectives iterative, if that's helpful. Councilmember Stewart is frustrated. I see that. So maybe, if I could throw this out there, maybe the best thing to do right at the moment is to divorce the work plan from the objectives and move on with the work plan separately and continue to work on the objectives. Because that's what I'm hearing where the angst is, if that's something that is of concern to council. We can do it that way, and we can come back. And I think with that in mind, if we were to go that road, I think what we would want to do is try to help get a sense from you all about what you would see as measurable components. Because I think that's the part where there's, it feels like there's a disconnect.
Perhaps, but, you know, I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. So that's kind of where I land on this personally, is that I think we're in, I think we're in the good enough shape to be able to transact.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion that we approve Resolution Exhibit One.
I'll second that.
I'd like to speak to my motion, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely some things, as councilmember Howe said, that are not perfect in it. I clearly voted no on a transportation plan, but it's on there as an objective. So in the spirit of cooperation and coordinating and actually allowing staff to continue to move forward, I think we should definitely approve this and work to see if it's through the implementation of the dashboard that then helps clarify these objectives that then are measurable, or if we need to provide additional information over the next quarter. But it does allow us to move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, does anyone else want to speak to that motion? Yeah, councilmember Stewart?
I'd like to propose an amendment. At least get one of my changes in here, which is, sorry, I need to find it. I'd like to propose that we amend Objective 7 dot 1. It says, improve the connectivity of people, goods, and wildlife in an efficient, effective, and safe way. I'd like to change it to say that we should improve the connectivity of people, goods, and wildlife in an efficient, environmentally sustainable, and safe way.
I'll second that. All right, that's been moved and seconded. I always forget what we vote on now. Sorry. As amended or just the amendment?
You can have discussion on that and vote on that first, and then go back to the main motion for the exhibit as amended.
Great. Does anyone have, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just, I want to ask if there's, I mean, if we pass this, can we still make the objectives measurable? Because I don't, I personally don't want a dashboard that just is like a work plan status update. Like, I want there to be measurable objectives, and we show people that we're 80% done, or, you know, something like that, that we show that progress. So is there still going to be an opportunity if we pass this? Or once we pass it, then that's it. We're just done for the year?
Appreciate that, councilmember. And I think if I wasn't clear, I apologize. We do plan on bringing the work on the dashboard, and part of the work on the dashboard is trying to come up with what those measurements are and bring them to council to talk through that. And I see that as an iterative process to figure out if we're on the right track or not. Again, this is year zero for us doing it this way, and so we're creating it as we go. Part of the work that Lacey and Mike are doing is trying to figure out how, what the dashboard looks like and how it displays, and then what goes into it, to get to your point about connecting between different, different goals and objectives, but also to be able to figure out what is the right measurable components to actually meet the metrics of that objective.
So when you go through and map the work plan items to objectives, if you find that there's no objective to map it to, will we then have an opportunity to create those objectives or to make a decision on whether that work plan item belongs there or not?
You mean within a certain, within a certain goal or overall?
What we had talked about was that each work plan item should be mapped to the objectives that it's going to satisfy. And it's very clear that there are some sections on here, like there's all the work on the fields, right? And all, really all the work from the Parks and Rec Department, which I think is great work, and I think we should do it. There's not a single goal, there's not a single objective that speaks to that. So if you were to go through and map the work plan items to the objectives that they're, that they're serving, you will find work plan items that don't map to objectives and so appear on a dashboard. So we need to fix that, right?
Appreciate that, councilmember. I think that one of the pieces that we can also, if council so chooses, that we can have other items that we're working on, that we can put on the dashboard. If council so chooses to make an objective that roughly equates to every work plan item, then that's something that we can discuss.
Well, I'm confused, Scott, because you said that you were going to go and map all the work plan items to the objectives. Is that, is that still not the plan? Bless you.
Excuse me. Yes, that is the plan. However, my expectation would be that there are some that aren't, that don't neatly fit into any of those. I think the question for you all is, is that an issue?
It should be, because otherwise, the goals and objectives exercise was just an exercise, and it wasn't really to make sure that all the work we're doing is achieving our goals and objectives.
Did you want to speak to that amendment?
Yeah, I think the word, to that amendment specifically and not to the part about goals and objectives, which I think is a different discussion. and objectives, which I think is a different discussion. So I, I really appreciate the addition of the word sustainable, because I think that is, again, an umbrella and a value statement, again. And I think that is something we should, again, probably bring in to guide our goals and objectives. So I support the motion, the amendment to the motion.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Liam?
I'm also comfortable with this work plan. I think that as we work on the dashboard, when there's opportunity, you know, of course, it can have the measurable and time-bound outcomes that we want. So I, I am comfortable with it.
All right. I don't see any other hands. So all those in favor of the amendment by Councilmember Stewart, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that amendment passes. Was there any other discussion on the original motion to approve the Resolution 2023-996? All right, all those in favor of adopting that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mike, thank you, Lacey. We are going to be bugging you for the next nine months, absolutely. In a good way. I think this will be good. Like you said, this is year zero. It can't get worse, right? I hope. Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so as David gets ready, I think we are definitely going to have to extend past 10. I'm not sure what items 13 and 14 will take for time, so. Do we think 1030? What do you all think? Would anyone like, I move that we extend to 1030.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Any thoughts or questions? All right, all those in favor to extend to 1030, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. All right, so David is talking to us about the Comprehensive Plan Update Land Use Guiding Principles.
Thank you. So as we're promoted, I believe we're going to be promoting Jeff Arango from Framework Consulting, who will be leading the presentation. I myself will be participating in it, and we also will have, I believe, Evan Fisher, who is the Comprehensive Plan Project Manager. He may not be promoted, but here we have Jeff. Good evening, Jeff. So I believe Jeff is going to be working on sharing his screen, and then we'll get started with the presentation. The topic this evening is land use guiding principles in, in support of our development of alternatives for the Comprehensive Plan Update.
Okay. Great, thank you for the introduction, David. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and so city council members, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. And as David said, we are going to be talking about land use guiding principles, as well as providing some background on some potential housing strategies as a precursor to our upcoming land use alternatives discussions that we'll be having in early April with both the city council and with the planning commission. Before I get in the presentation, I just also wanted to let you know that we're actively working on updating the vision statement based on the feedback we've gotten from the council, as well as working on developing the value statements with the input from council as well. We plan to bring that back to you relatively shortly. So we'd like to start tonight with the meeting goals, and I would say the overall goal of the meeting is to introduce some potential housing strategies as some things that we want to think about relative to the land use alternatives, which we'll be talking about in April. There's more data and information and analysis on some of these strategies that we plan to bring back in terms of what it would mean for the community if these were implemented. But we're looking to introduce the topics and get feedback tonight. So the first goal, we want to highlight state and regional housing mandates, you know, what are our housing targets, both for total number of units as well as different affordability levels, and also talk about this in the context of local housing needs, which is something that we're going to be looking at as part of the housing element, building on the work of the Housing Action Plan to continue to define local housing needs. And also, just wanted to say that some of the requirements, the mandates, there may be some overlap with local needs as well, so they're not completely distinct categories. So we need to be able to demonstrate we have capacity to meet the affordable housing mandates, and housing strategies should also address local needs. David, in a few moments, will be presenting some draft land use principles. These will help us develop both the land use alternatives, as well as select eventually a preferred alternative, which could be one alternative or a combination of the alternatives that we develop. And I think one of our early takeaways is that while Sammamish does have housing capacity that generally is in line with the total housing target, we may not have capacity or do not have capacity in certain types of housing or building types to meet the affordable housing mandates, and we'll unpack that a little bit more later in the presentation. And we're looking for direction to guide decision-making, again, on the land use alternatives and selection of a preferred. We'll then introduce some housing strategies related to land use and zoning. We need to provide demonstrated capacity for the housing types needed to meet those affordable housing targets, and there is some recent guidance from the Washington Department of Commerce on that topic. And we need to provide options for diverse housing types that get at the issue of local need. So the growth targets and the mandates start with the Growth Management Act at the top of the pyramid here, filter down to the Puget Sound Regional Council, and Vision 2050, and the multi-county planning policies, countywide planning policies for King County, as well as the housing targets that come from King County, including affordable housing, and then down to the local comprehensive plan. And as I just stated, there's been recent guidance from the Department of Commerce and PSRC in terms of how we analyze and assess these issues and ultimately come into compliance. So growth targets overview, the map on the left is just the existing zoning map. The map on the right is mapped capacity from the King County Buildable Lands work that was done a while back. And this kind of highlights the issue that I described earlier. We have a housing target overall of about 2,100 units that doesn't include emergency housing, which I'll talk about in a moment. And in order to meet particularly the deep levels of affordability, think 80% or below, or in particular 50% of AMI or below, the recent guidance from Department of Commerce is that those deep affordability units would typically be refitted in mid-rise housing. There is an opportunity to demonstrate that other housing types could provide those levels of affordability, but we would be able, we would need to show that. And so one of the things that we've been doing is looking at the capacity within the city for different types of housing. And you'll notice the yellow dots with the numbers, those are in the R zones. And typically, in R zones where it's predominantly single-family and a relatively low densities, it would be very difficult to provide those affordability levels that we're required to do. So there may be a mismatch, if you will, of the affordability we need to provide and the types of housing that can currently be built under Sammamish zoning. In addition to that, we want to identify local needs and factor that into our alternatives and our analysis of capacity. So this graphic shows the housing targets broken out by affordability levels. And so, starting up here in the top, permanently supportive housing between 0 and 30% AMI, we have 554 units. Same AMI or affordability category, and we do have dollar amounts here that represent those figures for a family of four, 918 units, 400 units between 30 and 50%, 220 between 50 and 80%. And we do not have a specific target between 80 or to 120% and above. And I think this is where we want to have the conversation around local needs, and there's some analysis that we'll be doing as part of the housing element that will help us be able to answer that. And then down here at the bottom, we just have the affordability levels, and again, what you could afford in terms of a rent or a mortgage payment, including utilities, without being cost burdened, which would be defined as 30% or less of your gross salary. And then finally, we just want to highlight that not included in the target, but something we also have to be able to accommodate, is 390 units of emergency housing. And just as a reference, the area median income that we use for the purposes of this analysis is the area median income, which is 134,000 for households of four persons. So again, back to the discussion around local needs and desires, up here, looking at kind of different household types and housing needs, everything from young families, seniors, empty nesters, and so on and so forth. So what are the local needs within Sammamish among those different groups? And so some of the things we're going to look at as part of the housing element, and we have already begun some of this work, local needs around housing choice and affordability. We've heard during the planning summit on housing, for example, there are folks that may be looking to downsize, really want to stay in their community, may not have the housing choices. Workforce housing, so as part of the economic development element, we'll be looking at jobs and the economy in Sammamish, you know, what would it look like to have a balance of housing that matched the jobs within Sammamish, so that folks would have the opportunity to both live and work in Sammamish and vice versa. Looking at proximity to services and amenities, we want to look at different types of housing and proximity to schools, transit, access, the centers, parks, things like that. And then finally, the concept of single-family and multi-generational housing. So how can multiple generations of a family, you know, live in, in one location or one home? And I think that's kind of an emerging issue as well that we've heard from during the public outreach process. And then all of this is informed, of course, by the Housing Action Plan, which included the housing needs assessment, the Planning Summit Series, the Housing Survey, which my understanding was statistically valid, and then the housing element background material, which I just referenced earlier and is ongoing. So one of the things that we looked at recently was what are some of the gaps between what was completed for the Housing Action Plan and what is required for the Comprehensive Plan? And those requirements have changed, both from a state legislative perspective, but also from the countywide planning policies for King County. So the top bullet, the HAP does address, to some extent, local needs, but does not compare existing housing supply to countywide need percentages. So basically, this looks at your housing stock and costs versus your residence or households and income levels, and looking for mismatches. Does not adequately address disparate impacts in the housing needs of BIPOC communities mandated by one of King County, King County's countywide planning policies, H4M. And then the HAP does not directly address the housing needs of those who require supportive services or accessible units. And so this is just a couple of highlights. There are others, but we will be addressing those gaps through our work. And one of the examples we wanted to show you tonight is from a recent project that, well, we're still ongoing, but for the housing element for the city of Milton, which is a small community near Tacoma, we looked at comparing, again, households and income levels within Milton to the housing stock and trying to find mismatches. This is an easier analysis to do for rental, because the costs are more predictable. It's a little more challenging for ownership, because you have to make some assumptions like on down payments and things like that. Not to say it can't be done, it's just a little bit more nuanced. And then the idea is that you then identify gaps, right? So, for example, here, there's a gap of 162 units in the city of Milton for those income levels under 30%, based on the population and households that fall into those categories. So you start to, again, get a sense of maybe what some of the local needs are based on the existing population. And then there's ways to layer on additional analysis for things like alignment between housing supply and the local workforce, and some of those other issues that we've been talking about through the engagement process. And now I will turn it over to David. He did a great job putting together some land use principles. Some of our team put together these kind of icons that illustrate them, and so this is a summary of them. But I'll go to the next page, it actually lists out the texts that go with them, and I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Jeff, great presentation. So guidance is needed from the council to help begin exploring land use alternatives as the city moves into the next phase of the Comprehensive Plan Update. Land use alternatives are potential policy paths the city may take to meet state and county requirements while still achieving community goals. The development of these alternatives will be shaped by guiding principles that reflect the values, goals, and constraints for land use challenges within Sammamish. Staff have developed the following guiding principles based on conversations and feedback from the city council, planning commission, and community. The council is asked to consider these draft guiding principles and provide feedback. Staff are looking for affirmation of the proposed guiding principles to begin the process of refining land use alternatives. The approved list of guiding principles will be used to develop and test land use alternatives that will be presented to the city council on April 4th. Two questions for the council, there are two questions for council consideration this evening. What edits does the council feel are needed to the proposed draft guiding principles? And are there any additional guiding principles necessary or that are missing? So the first guiding principle is to be responsive to state, regional, and county requirements, guidance, and criteria, so that the city can achieve Comprehensive Plan certification. The next is to be complementary to existing historic land use and zoning patterns, so that the fundamental makeup of the city does not change. If you recall, past conversation with the council, we did present a history of the city's zoning maps prior, going back to prior to incorporation. The next is to be additive to, not deconstructive of, single-family zoning, so that we enhance existing neighborhoods, retain existing housing stock, and add more diverse and affordable housing supply. Next slide, please? The next is to leverage existing infrastructure to minimize service costs for new development, so that barriers are reduced for new diverse and affordable housing. Focus on redevelopment of areas of existing impervious surface, so that impacts to aquatic resources are minimized. And from the comments I've heard prior, in the, in the public comment session earlier, I feel there's some misunderstanding on this one, and I'd be happy to explain it a little bit later in the presentation. The next is to utilize successful zoning practices, such as the wedding cake theory, so that, so that the development of diverse housing types are integrated and blended into and match existing development patterns at the outward edge. The next is to be at a sufficient scale to promote deep affordability, so that housing at specified income ranges is achievable. Next slide. Be within walkable proximity to amenities, features, services, jobs, and transit to reduce vehicle miles and decrease dependence on single occupancy vehicles. Promote equitable access to amenities, features, and services, so that all members of the community have equal access to community attributes. Be responsive to existing constraints and future opportunities, for example, transfer of development rights, so that development happens in the appropriate location, configuration, and intensity. And minimize displacement, so that existing housing stock is maintained, and the financial appeal of redevelopment does not result in the loss of existing units. And I can't recall if there's another slide here, Jeff, so, nope, okay. So we do have a few more slides in the presentation, and the, the option on the council, for the council at this point, is to finish the presentation, hold questions, and come back to these and have a conversation on these. Or I think we could, we could take questions on these now. I think we prefer to finish the presentation, as there is some additional information that might help guide the conversation on the, on the proposed principles. All right, Jeff, you can proceed.
Great, thank you, David. So now, we would like to get into kind of introducing some potential land use and housing strategies that could help us be, meet both our mandates and help address potential local needs. I also want to point out that we also have a jobs target, but because of the complexity with which we need to address in order to meet the housing targets, we've been focusing on that. But just, so you're aware, when we come back with land use alternatives and have that discussion, we will be talking about jobs and economic development as well. So, breaking these down, these strategies generally into two categories, strategies for compliance, strategies to address. So uh, breaking these down, uh, these strategies generally into two categories, strategies for compliance, strategies to address local needs and desires. And strategies for compliance are really hyper-focused on meeting the affordability, um, mandates for new housing in Samamish. And again, the guidance that we've gotten from Commerce generally is favorable towards mid-rise housing um, as the most likely typology that would allow us to meet those deep affordability levels. So we have two kind of main uh, uh, strategies, if you will, in order to meet that. The first is increase capacity in the centers, since those are the areas currently that allow mid-rise housing. And we began to analyze both the existing capacity, um, and what it might look like to increase capacity. And we'll have numbers and, and information and data to share with you in April, so that will be forthcoming. And then the second strategy, and I'll go into all of these in more detail, is what we're calling bonus parcels. These would be additional parcels that might have opportunities for um, uh, affordable housing developments, uh, things like religious institutions, publicly owned properties, things like that. And then potential strategies to address local needs and desires would be things like middle housing, so townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, housing of those sorts, um, that is generally, you know, smaller in scale, um, can be infused into single-family neighborhoods, but but isn't larger apartment buildings. Uh, cottage housing, which is actually a single-family typology, but it's um, generally developed in a kind of a clustered format. We shared open space. Middle housing around uh, potentially new neighborhood centers, and I'll talk about that just briefly in a moment. Uh, Planned Residential Development, which was a topic that came up in Phase Two of the Development regs. We actually did go as far as drafting uh, some code sections for that, but it ultimately um, was decided it was best to kind of wait and take that up at a future effort. And then accessory dwelling units currently allowed, but I think there's more opportunities to, to look at um, the ability of those to meet our housing needs. So first, um, just briefly before I go into the core strategies, um, we wanted to introduce the potential topic of new neighborhood centers. Um, and this is something I think that we're thinking of more in terms of planting the policy foundation within the comp plan, but perhaps not necessarily designating new centers at this time. Um, it could be part of a future uh, sub-area planning effort, or they could be potentially even proposed as part of a planned residential development or a master plan development. But we just wanted to highlight currently in, in the city, um, of course, you have the Town Center, which is the major center. Then you have what we're calling the Commercial Centers. These are the existing ones of um, uh, Pine Lake and Cloughaney and Inglewood. And then um, potential for what we're calling a Neighborhood Center, and I think the, the small neighborhood commercial area on Eastlake Samamish Parkway is probably the closest thing we may have in Samamish today. But these would be much smaller in scale, and these could be something that could be um, introduced in other parts of the ci- city to fill gaps. Um, in terms of access to goods and services, they could be co-located with parks and schools and other amenities. Um, again, we don't know exactly what that would look like, but we just wanted to introduce that as a topic. And if these were designated in the future, then that could potentially come with associated increase in housing opportunities around those. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process of developing the land use alternatives. Okay, so now we're going to go through the two uh, core strategies related to uh, meeting the housing mandates. So increased capacity in the centers. So the existing centers are primarily developed with commercial and non-residential development. Uh, but they do all allow housing, um, in the centers that are outside of the Town Center, particularly Inglewood, Pine Lake, and Cloughaney. They typically allow densities of around eighteen units per acre, uh, which is more of a density associated with something like a townhouse than it might be with a mid-rise. Um, but if we wanted to increase the capacity for mid-rise housing and give us um, more likelihood that we could increase our development of affordable housing and meet our targets, um, this is a potential strategy. We could look at this uh, in association with inclusionary zoning, perhaps bonuses for commercial spacing, space. Um, future sub-area planning would likely um, be wise in order to more fully flesh out um, what redevelopment of these areas would look like, potential investments in public infrastructure, place making, urban design, those types of things. Um, but this, uh, because it's the only place that currently allows mid-rise hous- mid-rise housing, this is kind of the place that we wanted to start. So one of the strategies would be to increase the allowable density from eighteen units up to something that is more commensurate with um, uh, mid-rise housing, but also ensure that we retain the commercial um, development, uh, services and amenities, um, that the community relies on. And here are just a couple of examples that you may be familiar with. These are some of the first um, larger apartment buildings that were built in downtown Redmond, where the new park is. This is Thornton Place, which was uh, kind of the first transit-oriented development in Seattle near Northgate. Um, and the, the centers could include a mix of housing types, things like mid-rise apartments, courtyard apartments, walk-up apartments, uh, potential use of mass timber, um. A concept uh, for housing called point access blocks, which are generally smaller scale. Um, apartment buildings that are really very efficient because they have a single elevator and stair corps. And these would be suitable for owners and renters. This would um, give us uh, the best likelihood to meet the affordability levels that were required to provide and has the highest amount of unit capacity potential. And again, we will uh, definitely be bringing out back more data and information and numbers around what this would look like. Uh, some other examples, um, this one is interesting. This is the Sky Apartments, which is up in the Town Center. Um, this uh, was actually developed at ninety-six units an acre when you factor in the parcels surrounding just the building. Um, this is made possible because it's actually drawing some of uh, the density from the commercial part of the development uh, associated with the Met Market. But this is, I think, a mid-rise, a good mid-rise local example, built to close up, close to a hundred uh, units uh, an acre and has thirty affordable units. And then just a few other examples that are of a similar density, some are a little higher and a little lower. There's the Vale Apartments in Issaquah, ninety units an acre. The Park uh, Apartments in Kirkland, ninety-seven units an acre, and Bada uh, Apartments in Kirkland at a hundred and thirty-three units an acre. And I think it's also important to point out the distinction between a building typology and density. Um, you know, if you're standing at the street level and this is a hundred and thirty-three uh, units an acre, it's really going to seem the same to you regardless of what the actual density is, because the density is just based on how big the parcel is. So if there was a larger parcel, it would theoretically be a lower density, but the impact um, uh, visually and experientially is, is more or less the same. Okay, the next uh, potential strategy, and this is one that's uh, Bellevue has uh, established a program. And there's a few other cities that have as well. Um, we're calling it bonus parcels for lack of a better term. But these are areas that currently are not zoned to allow mid-rise housing, um, but could be uh, authorized through updates to the code. These would include uh, religious-owned properties, potentially county-owned property and city-owned uh, properties. Um, um, and these could be authorized again through zoning uh, to allow for affordable housing to be developed. And the recent state legislative bill that passed HB thirteen seventy-seven in two thousand nineteen that authorizes the density bonuses on religiously owned properties if they remain affordable uh, to eighty percent or below for at least fifty years. Uh, these have the potential to provide um, a variety of the same types of housing uh, styles, building types that I mentioned for the previous strategy. Again, opportunity to meet deeper affordability and moderate to high amount of unit capacity. You can see from the previous map, there's not a ton of parcels, um, that fall into those categories, but still the impact would be measurable. And here are a couple of examples. So this is um, I think in Bellevue, this is Saint Luke's Lutheran Church and a mid-rise building, affordable housing, but for thirty to eighty percent uh, median income located to the rear of that structure. Compass Broadview, fifty-nine units, um, thirty to fifty percent AMI related to the Luther Memorial Lutheran Church. And then this last example, the Velocity Apartments, fifty-eight units at thirty to sixty percent AMI. Um, includes community space and amenities for families and children, affordable housing on surplus county-owned land. And that's in Kirkland, near the South Kirkland Park and Ride. Okay, now moving into some of the strategies that are more uh, applicable to local needs, uh, what we're calling the middle housing overlay. Uh, this also is uh, tracking somewhat with some of the housing legislation that's currently being considered by the legislature. Um, again, that's a bit of a moving target, but we did want to take a look at what that might look like. So the two maps show overlays uh, of a quarter mile and a half mile from centers, so those centers I showed on the previous slide, transit uh, stops and schools and parks. Um, and so the capacity for new housing would depend on, you know, how big the overlay is. Um, the base zoning would likely remain the same for single-family development, um, with the added uh, middle housing use types associated also with some density increase to make middle housing work. And this analysis will be focused on those parcels that fall within these boundaries that have already been identified to have development capacity from buildable lands, and we'll be crunching those numbers and bringing it back to the council. So middle housing can include uh, different types of triplexes, fourplexes, um, things like cottage clusters, bungalow courts, uh, townhomes, duplexes, uh, these can be suitable for owners and renters. Uh, they tend not to be associated with deep affordability, but could help uh, meet targets or local needs for moderate affordability, generally eighty to a hundred and twenty percent and above. And there's a moderate to high amount of unit capacity depending on the regulatory approach that we take to this. So large lot cottage housing, so cottage housing again, uh, are small, single-family homes clustered on typically an individual lot. They can either be rental or for sale. Um, they typically have common space associated with them, shared parking and things like that. Typical density for cottage housing in my experience is about twelve units per acre. Um, and I was previously the planning director up in Langley, uh, on Whidby Island, where I believe they had one of the first cottage housing codes and, and I did, was involved in a, some of the projects there. But anyways, um, density allowances typically up to twelve units per acre. There could be the opportunity to get um, one or a few moderately affordable units out of that as well. Um, this map just simply shows uh, parcels that are over a half acre, uh, which would, you know, lend themselves to cottage housing. It doesn't indicate necessarily that all these parcels would be eligible or suitable for it, but we just did a quick analysis to show where there's some potentially larger lots that would lend itself to affordable cottage housing projects. And these are some examples here, uh, Kirkland. Again, you can see the single-family kind of architecture and typology, really nice landscape, shared spaces. Um, this is sort of a outdoor barbecue area with a lawn, attractive kind of small-scale housing. This is from Baybridge Island, and they have several uh, cottage housing projects on Baybridge as well. Um, again, uh, more attuned to moderate affordability and low to moderate amounts of unit capacity, again, depending on the regulatory approach. Um, and this is related to what I introduced earlier, which is the middle housing around new neighborhood centers. Again, not sure that we'll get to the point of adopting new ones, uh, new centers as part of this effort, but we could lay the policy groundwork. These are just a couple of examples, um, from Rolling Bay and Baybridge Island. This is the Bay Hay and Feed, uh, which is kind of an iconic store. Uh, there's some auto repair places, some retails, some restaurants, but it's generally, again, pretty small scale, kind of like a crossroads kind of thing. Uh, generally walkable to neighborhoods. Um, so again, just something we wanted to put out there as a potential concept that could help us both meet our housing needs, but also uh, address perhaps transportation issues, sustainability, walkability, connections between residences and goods and services. Um, and these are just a couple of middle kind of housing examples, townhouses. Uh, the one on the left here is a triplex, and this, I think, is a uh, a fourplex uh, here on the bottom right. Um, variety of middle housing types, again, moderate affordability, and uh, some of this will depend on the regulatory approach that we would take. Okay, next, Planned Residential Development. As I said earlier, we introduced the topic in Phase Two, but it was um, uh, put on the sidelines for um, a future effort. But a Planned Residential Development is typically done uh, in a single-family or a residentially zoned area. It provides a flexible approach to site planning and development in exchange for public benefits. So if you can demonstrate that your design of your project is superior to the baseline zoning, um, then there's some accommodation of that. There can be uh, requirements for different types of housing units, um, opportunities to infuse affordability. Um, typically involves some form of density increase, uh, may also include some small commercial spaces. Um, and if it was a large enough project, you might even allow, you know, the potential to create and designate a new neighborhood center. Um, but these can be crafted, you know, based on whatever the community priorities are. There's no one formula for how these work. Uh, can include a variety of housing types, um, from middle housing even up to apartment buildings at certain locations. Um, generally more applicable to moderate affordability, but I think we can get into the fifty percent, fifty to eighty percent AMI uh, range as well. Probably a low to moderate amount of capacity, and it's also quite difficult to predict because you're not quite sure uh, who's going to come forward with a, with a planned residential project, but we could certainly come up with some assumptions there. Couple of examples, uh, the top two are from the Lookout in Chelan, and you can see some of these uh, take on kind of a new urbanist uh, style. Um, but again, within this, there's a mix of housing types. This is kind of more single-family focused neighborhood, but there is some middle housing in there as well. And then Newtown in Saint Charles, Missouri, um, also a kind of new urbanist style development with a range of housing types. All right, I think we're getting to the end here. Accessory dwelling units, um, something authorized currently in Samamish. But like most communities, I don't think Samamish is seeing a lot of production. Um, and there may be some tweaks we could do to, to change that. Uh, the map on the right is just simply showing parcels that have an existing single-family home on them that could theoretically um, include an additional ADU. Uh, some communities have, in certain circumstances, allowed more than one ADU. Um, so that's, you know, something we could look at. Uh, there may be some other bonuses or incentives possible to enable uh, some measure of affordability. Uh, these are typically not counted towards your development capacity, but they, um, there is the opportunity to do that. Um, if we so desire, and we'd have to come up with assumptions around what that would look like and how much development we would likely see during the planning period. So these can include small backyard cottages. You can uh, carve ADUs out of the interior of the home or in the basement. Um, again, more around the mod- bit, moderate affordability, probably low amounts of capacity just because we don't typically see a lot of production. Uh, but there may be, again, some ways that we could address that. So that's the end of the presentation. We do have the land use principal slides um, repeated after this. We want to refer to them as you're um, giving us feedback, but I'll just quickly read the three uh, questions we have. Do you have suggested changes or additions to land use principles? And one that I had thought of potentially after uh, we had compiled this list was maybe something about addressing our local needs as well, uh, particularly related to housing. Uh, does the council have input on whether the state and regional planning requirements are consistent or inconsistent with certain local needs? Such as housing, infrastructure, economic development, climate impacts, and transportation, uh, and other factors? And then finally, does the council have feedback on the potential housing strategies for land use alternatives? Um, and again, this would just be looking for general, general feedback in terms of uh, which strategies you think we should carry forward to the land use alternatives discussion, if there's any we should sort of remove from the list. Um, and any other associated information that we may not be thinking of already, um, that we could bring back uh, to that discussion in April to help inform um, that conversation. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and open it up for discussion.
All right, council, looking for hands. Council member, how?
I wonder if an approach to, to look at this, um, is to actually kind of go through each of the um, eleven points and come and actually kind of have a, a couple of examples to help round it out and flesh it out. So and see if we can just even move on kind of quickly through this. Maybe not quickly, but move through it. Because as I look at the first piece, for example, be responsive to state and regional kind of requirements, that to me seems like kind of a no brainer and a non argument because we have to. I mean, that's just, it is what it is. What I'm also trying to get to is where, you know, to get to the point where the the rub points. Because when I look at the housing numbers, the twenty one hundred units, for example, and then look that they can't all be at the AMIs that we're looking at because they all, it's just not tenable. So I think our numbers are not coherent. And so I I'm trying to figure out how to get to that, to the meat of that and if you want to go through each of these individual pieces. Or if you want to tackle the big nut, which is I think our numbers are not right.
So I I think the first one is planted here as a reminder because we could get wrapped up in our local needs and wants and we could forget about the fact that we're under a mandate. And if we do not deliver, we will not reach certification.
And that's kind of why I was saying like, like the first piece, we, I think we could just check that one saying, yeah, we should, we have to do that.
So we might as well take on the number right away if that's okay. I think the best way that this has been described to me is to think of a triangle. And there are three points on a triangle. And the first point on the triangle, whichever way you're directing it, yep. The first point on on your triangle is the first piece of information that we uncovered as part of the process working with the county through the urban growth capacity study. And that is the city's land use capacity. So in the case of our capacity, we've given you that number previously. We've explained how that differs from the urban growth capacity study because the county used the assumed density in the town center as opposed to the actual capacity for for density in the town center. So we adjusted it accordingly, right? So we actually have a number for land capacity. That's your first point on the triangle. The next point on the triangle is your growth target. And that's the next stop along the journey that you you worked on a growth target, set it at twenty one hundred units. That that was accepted by the the King County Regional Cities and Towns Regional Caucus. And that was set in King County Countywide Planning Policy and adopted by the King County Council. The third point on the triangle, which is the new one, and it's about to be passed by King County, it's not formalized yet, is the affordable housing target.
Right.
So the the point that's been made to me is that these are all different numbers. They're they're not mutually exclusive. And if you, your your target, your goal is to land in that triangle. So you might find that, so first of all, it's been very clear. If you read through the King County Growth Management Planning Council Affordable Housing Committee frequently asked questions or FQAs that that they provided and I've linked into the agenda packet. If you read through those those responses, the first, one of the big questions is will cities have the opportunity to or be required to update their their growth targets? And the answer is no, growth targets will not be updated. So take that for what what it says. So we're not, we're not entertaining an update of our growth target. The next question that's asked is what happens if a city through the process of trying to meet these affordable housing targets and by providing inclusionary zoning and building market units in order to incentivize the the affordable units creates an overrun of its growth target? And the answer is from King County that the cities should should focus on hitting their growth targets as a target because an overrun would be an oversupply and an underrun would be an inadequate supply. Take that for what it says. So so the goal is to hit your target. So then what we're trying to do is we're trying to balance all of those three points in the triangle. And we understand and the county understands and they've admitted in 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 regional meetings that there are likely to be some overruns that would occur. However, you should be planning for your growth target. You should be accommodating your affordable housing targets and you should be providing the capacity needed to get there. So try and put those together into that triangle and think about that that way. It's a bit abstract, I know, but we all are going to have to get comfortable with that because this is the context in which we're planning for twenty twenty four.
It was helpful to understand that that's the the triangle I'm shooting for from my thirty thousand foot parachute and trying to land because that's what it sort of feels like. People will be making best efforts. What? I think the intent of all of the individual components that you had, the eleven, were they they sound reasonable to me. They cover a broad territory. I am concerned about achievability, realistic achievability. Because it sounds awesome. I don't know how realistic they are. And that I don't know how you could answer that question either. But do you have a concern about that?
So if one thing that the county has also pointed out is that they're not. So at five years, we're going to have to provide a data output, right? We we would like to dashboard this so that you can see our progress against our our capacity, our growth target and our affordable housing target. Once we get to that point, that's a little ways down the road. But what what the county has been clear about is that that you should be planning under the context that of that that funding is not an issue for affordable housing. They've been very clear about that. They have said, we're not expecting the cities to fund this. You have to have a component in your comp plan that talks about funding and how you might help with partnerships and how you're not going to be a barrier to funding. But you don't have to show how you're providing funding to build it. So that's important to understand. They've also pointed out that they don't, they don't expect the city to purchase land or condemn land or acquire land in order to make it happen. It's not a requirement. If you did that, that's great. If you have a plan for that, that's great. But you shouldn't be a barrier to someone acquiring the land and providing that type of housing. That's the big point they're trying to make. So if if you think about it from that angle, we're really trying to demonstrate that we have capacity. We're able to plan for, accommodate, have capacity for and are not providing a barrier to the delivery of this type of housing. They will look at our our report in five years after comp plan certification. And they will come back and say, you know, we think you need to make some changes because we're not seeing, you know, any supply being brought online. Their projects aren't being delivered. And at that point, we'll have to consider a mid cycle amendment to our comp plan. You know, we're on a tenure cycle now, so we'll have to consider a mid cycle amendment. And there, we'll have to work with the King County and with the 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 state and PSRC on doing that. But the point there is that it's, they're not going to take away your certification, but they're going to instead do is want to work with you to try and find, find out why it's not being delivered. What what assumptions that you made didn't hold true? What 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 reality didn't come true? And it's probable that many cities are going to be making adjustments five years down the line. That is widely talked about and known. So we're doing our best to try to plan for, accommodate, provide, provide capacity for and not present a barrier to delivery of those housing numbers for affordable housing.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that does provide helpful context and I'm trying to grapple with being tasked with something that may or may not be attainable and yet we're putting it into a comp plan because we kind of have to. The, I want other people to to pile in here because I don't want to take up the airtime here. So I think I'll go ahead and just see.
Can I show some examples?
You know, I think that would be great.
So so this one goes after the the one of the guiding principles and I'll share my screen here. If that's okay, if I can do that, Jeff, for a second, thank you. So do I need to be promoted? I think I need to be promoted. I apologize. So this goes after the guiding principle of focus on existing impervious surface. And this is the one I feel that might have been misunderstood by some members of the audience. And I'm going to show some example aerial photographs that show how this has worked in other communities. Just a second, I'm finding my screen. So this is, let me see if I can, yep, it looks good. So this, this is, this is Northgate. This is Thornton Creek. So this is two thousand two. And if you look at it in twenty twenty one, this is what it looks like. So this is an example of repurposing existing impervious surface for the purpose of providing housing and also some amenities, right? This, this one is Totem Lake in Kirkland. I think many of you have been there. This is what it looked like in around two thousand two. And let me pull this base map up. And this is what it looks like now in twenty twenty one. So you can see how that infilled. The next one here is this is Crossroads in Bellevue. And this is what it looked like in about two thousand two. And you can see what happened when they infilled it and how all these different units filled in in the parking lot. This one is in Shoreline. This is up in North City and this is an old post office that's here. And you can see how that looked and you can see what happened when they infilled it. If I could just get this thing to stop popping up on me, there we go. That's what it looked like when they they infilled it and built a five over one with a pretty deep level of affordability. This, whoops. There's too many controls on the top of the screen and I'm having a hard time selecting the this is the Pine Lake shopping area as it currently stands today. This is the the Inglewood shopping area as it currently stands today. This is the Kohani shopping area as it currently stands today. And this is the, I want to call it the Monahan shopping area, the as it currently stands today. So you get, you can get an idea of what that guiding principle was was targeting is repurposing underutilized existing impervious surface where you could even make an improvement in stormwater because you're able to then retrofit it to current standard. You're able to to stack parking underground, build a five over one on top of it. And you're able to utilize things like, you know, if you, if you really wanted to go the distance with green building, you could start to look at sequestered concrete. You could look at cross laminated construction types that had a lighter frame and required a reduction in the amount of concrete and and steel for foundations. There are all kinds of things that are cutting edge technologies that could be applied in these areas. We're starting to see them in our region.
And I buy into this completely. And can you help me understand if, let's say, let's, let's just take right now the KFC parking lot for now. Let's say that that's a a great spot to do something phenomenal here that's got some kind of mixed use. We go up maybe three, maybe four stories. Who would be attracted to being able to build something like that? Because they have to be able to make their money off that. They had, in order to make this an achievable and attainable target. It's, they got to make a buck. So the Thornton Place one in specific in Northgate, that's a terrific piece of design. Stormwater solution, terrific. I mean, it's attractive, it's lovely. There's businesses around there to help support and sustain it, also transit center. Okay, so I'm looking at, I'm trying to figure out, okay, I would like to have that. I want that pretty shiny thing. Who would, who would deign to build that? And by the way, I need the affordable housing units in there too. So unless we are gifting money or land to bring in the right kind of developer, to bring the costs down so that they're able to build what we would like to see, I don't know how attainable this is. Can you help me understand?
So there's, so what we've learned from March and from some regional conversations is that stacking incentives is the way to achieve that. And what you start with is an overhaul of zoning that allows for a base density. I think Jeff was pointing out around a hundred dwelling units per acre is about what we're seeing as as where these are working. You start with that and you upzone it and that provides sort of that base. With that upzone, you include, you 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 package it as inclusionary upzone that a certain percentage at the base has to be affordable at certain income groups. So if they wanted to just build it like that, they could, right? If they could make that pencil. Then you add in additional programs. First, you add a commercial dent, a commercial bonus. So there's a commercial restriction on how much commercial you can fit on that, on a site like that and under zoning. So you add a commercial bonus, but you you might want to target specific occupancy types or retail types or businesses that are, maybe, maybe you want to target small business incubator spaces that you, you know, we, it's known that we have a large number of in-home businesses that likely need to find a place that's not in their home anymore. We get neighbor complaints, we have issues with people who have outgrown their homes with their businesses. It's an issue. So we we do need spaces in the city that are incubator spaces where you could build those types. So you add on a a commercial bonus for certain types of commercial spaces. Then you have another program that you're looking at, working on the transfer development rights. So now you add on a transfer development rights program and you create an economy around, you know, protecting land that shouldn't be built on in favor of moving that density to a location where it should be built on. And you can set the, the, you move the lever where it needs to be so that you're incentivizing it and you're, you're, you're accelerating the the level of affordability by providing an amplified number of units. Then, then on top of that, you you add on partnerships. And partnerships are are going to really be where you start to pull in that that state housing trust fund dollars where a not-for-profit builder has access to funds that a for-profit builder doesn't have access to. And what they can do is they can enter in and buy some of the units that are built or are going to be built and take those back to the affordable market at deep, deep levels of affordability. So when you look at that package of those types of of incentives stacked on top of each other, that's when you see this type of project take off. And it's, it's, remember the bucket analogy, how do you fill the bucket? That's, that's what we're talking about here. So I I recognize we probably need to extend and I also recognize that Jeff probably has a few things to say. And I apologize for the long explanation, but I felt like that was really one that that was worth talking about.
All right, council, I have no idea how long this is going to take to finish this and the next one.
Till eleven o'clock.
Second.
All right, moved in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
All right. Please continue.
Thanks, David. That was a really, you did a great summary of of how that would work. But stepping, you know, stepping back a little bit, the biggest challenge in meeting the deep affordability levels is the cost of land. And so as David described, the strategy in the centers, which are privately owned, would be to increase the, you know, economic value of market rate development such that you could offset the development of the affordable housing projects, which to meet those affordability levels would likely have to be done by affordable, affordable housing provider. Under a typical inclusionary zoning program, you might get ten percent of affordable units or something in that range. But because of the number of affordable units that we need to provide, that would, the math would not work on that. However, on the bonus parcel strategies, which is essentially what the Thornton Place project was on an old King County parking ride, it's really a different issue where you're creating value on existing land that maybe is underutilized. And so I think from some of the examples we showed of housing developed on religious institutions, for example, that a dynamic is quite different. And and so once the zoning controls are put in place, it then would, you know, require perhaps a partnership to move that forward, but it's in a way less complex than the scenarios described for the commercial center. So there's kind of two different strategies based on two different types of uses and parcels. And again, it still takes initiative and, you know, doesn't guarantee that it would happen, but it would, it would set the stage.
All right, who else? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, um, so I did have some feedback on the guiding principles. I think, David, if you could send us those FAQs, I wasn't able to find those. I'd love to be able to read through those and, and maybe follow up. For the affordable housing FAQs?
That were produced by the GMPC, AHC staff, yeah.
They're in here?
I believe they're linked in there.
Oh, page 193. All right, um, thanks. There you go. Okay. We can follow up on, on some of that math that doesn't pencil out because obviously no one's going to build a new building that's 100% affordable. So, we've got to get some, some clarity there. And while we do that, we can still work as a city to create policies and programs that will create as much affordable housing as we possibly can. And I think that we still need to be focused on that. So, I would like to go through this. I want to understand the item number two here, be complementary to existing historic land use and zoning patterns so that we don't change the fundamental makeup of the city. Can you explain that a little bit more? Because I'm pretty sure we also say that we want to add a more diverse housing supply, which I feel like will fundamentally change, right? Something. So, what, what are we trying to not fundamentally change exactly?
The, the, I guess the architecture of zoning in the city.
So, I, I'd be okay with, well, I don't even know if I know what that means. Can you explain that more?
Where the, the density currently is and how to add density around that and expand those areas, but not add new. At this point, I don't feel that we have adequate time to go through neighborhood planning and subarea planning to the level we would need to in order for us to add new centers and additional pockets of, um, mid-rise.
Got it. I can be on board with what you just said, but I don't feel like the words here on this page say what you just said. So, if we could modify the words to say what you just said, I'm in. And if you need more clarity, I'm happy to send an email, you know, tomorrow with more clarity around that. But I, I think this was, at least for me as a novice reader, it was a little bit cryptic and it kind of made it sound like, you know, we don't want to add any additional, you know, types of housing. We want to stay at 85% single family. And I don't think that was the intention. This next one, what does it mean when we say, I, I think this one means when we say be additive to and not deconstructive of. I think what you're saying is we're not planning to come into a neighborhood and tear down all the single-family houses and build an apartment building. Is that what this third one is intending to say?
Yes, it's looking at infill opportunities as opposed to, you know, destruction of, of tracts of homes, or I guess demolition would be a better term, of, of tracts of homes and, and building of mid-rise.
Totally, totally down with that.
The word not deconstructive of comes from a PSRC presentation.
Okay. I just wasn't sure exactly what you're saying, but I, I think that's fair. For number five, right, where you just showed us those examples of the, what you were talking about, again, I'm totally down with what you showed us. I'm not down with what's written on the page. I think you said it better when you said, as opposed to saying focus on redevelopment of, I think you could just say that one of our principles is that we will have a plan or we will incentivize or something the redevelopment of. I think it's the focus on. It makes it seem like we're not going to do something like build a town center, right? That's, that, when I read that, that's what it made me feel like it was potentially saying, and I don't want it to be misinterpreted.
That's not what that meant.
Exactly.
Yeah, it was, it was in addition to existing zoning and building out of existing zoning.
Right. So, again, maybe just a slight word tweak so that what you explained, which was awesome, is what it reads to the, to the person who didn't get your wonderful explanation with pictures.
Got it.
And then, um, number six. Again, I think the, the intent is great, but I think when you, the way it's worded, where it says utilize successful zoning practices such as wedding, the wedding cake theory, blah, 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 so that, to match existing development patterns at the outward edge. I think we can kind of just say use successful zoning practices to, you know, make sure that our new development blends well with, you know, existing things or something like that. I think when you put the, the wording where you put wedding cake so far up at the front, it kind of makes it seem like that's what we're going to do everywhere. And I'm not sure, like, if we did some of those things where we added some, you know, housing to a parking lot at the QFC, I don't think we're going to be able to employ the wedding cake there, right? There's not going to be enough. So, it just felt like it overemphasized the wedding cake, I guess. And it made, again, it made it seem like that's, that's the thing we were going to do everywhere.
I, I think the, the, the point we were trying to make with this one was more regarding blending on the outer edge.
Yeah.
That if we're going to allow for like a, some sort of a ring transition area around a commercial area or a, or a center, say a quarter mile that's walkable, that, that we want to make sure that we're, we're trying to blend the outer edge. And you're, you're seeing a gradation of missing middle types from, you know, a, a townhouse style down to a, a four-pack, down to a duplex, down to cottage housing, you know, on the, on the edge and that it, it more blends in, in terms of like architectural style.
Yeah. And I think, again, we can say that without making it feel like, oh, my God, you're going to do this weird wedding cake thing everywhere. Because I feel like that really works in the town center. I'm not sure we really have anywhere else where we could really employ that. And honestly, our current zoning, right, we only allow, for example, duplexes on the corner lot. So, we kind of break that rule with our current, right? Because it's only on the outer edge where you can do higher density as opposed to the interior. So, that's great. And then can you just explain to me what the, when you say be at sufficient scale to promote deep affordability, is that just saying like we have to build enough that we can have deep affordability? Is that what that means?
Well, it's also having enough of an area that you can make it work. So, one thing that we've looked at is trying to create sort of an exchange between a transition ring and a core. And this is a bit of an abstract topic, so I apologize. It's kind of a, if, if, if you were building a certain number of affordable units in the core, in the, in the center, say on the, the Pine Lake Shopping Center, the QFC parking lot, and you built more affordable units there, well, you could be given credits to build more market units in the quarter, the quarter mile ring around that, that, that center. So, there's that exchange that could occur. So, you have to have a big enough area for things like TDRs and transfers to work. And you have to have enough land to work with. So, the areas that we're looking at for applying these, these affordability components, the rezoning, any, any looking at, looking at any transition areas, missing middle, the areas have to be big enough for us to actually show that with the rate of redevelopment and development, with all the things that we're doing and show that it, we, we can make it pencil out. Remember, we have to fill out a workbook that's been given to us by Commerce.
Right.
And show how we get to that bottom number. Then we give that to PSRC and if, and if they, and they're checking our homework and if we don't, we don't do it all properly, then, then they're not going to give us certification.
Got it. No, that's fair. And again, if, maybe just add the word like land mass scale or something so it's clear because it, it just wasn't clear. Couple of other quick questions. So, currently we require 10% of the units in town center to be affordable. Two questions on that. One, can we increase that? And two, can we have these types of affordability requirements in other parts of the city or is it, can it only be in like a center? Like if there was a, a short plaque, could we have a requirement that some number of those units be affordable?
So, you, you could. You'd be better, you, you, you might stop development from happening period then, and then you would not achieve any units, right? So...
Well, that's okay. That helps with our numbers.
But, but if you were to do a planned unit development, which is what we were looking at under Development Regs Phase Two, we had a planning and development code. And one of the things we were looking at was the diversity in housing types, the, the, you know, duplexes and, and townhomes and, and cottages and things like that that we had mixed in there, but that we also were looking at some different levels of affordability. If you provided some additional 80% AMI units, you got, you know, this many more market units. So, that would be one way to do it that, that would layer on top of our existing regulations. If you did a planning and development, you, and you built a certain number of affordable units, well, you got some additional market units to help pay for that. The question always comes back to, how do you pay for the, the, the affordable unit? And you, you have to offer that incentive, that inclusionary incentive of additional market units to offset that cost. Now, Jeff, if you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just that, um, again, under a market, what, what I would describe as more of a market-based inclusionary's program where you're getting 10%. If you just look at the capacity and it like, let's say we had 2,000 units and we had an inclusionary zoning program and 10% had to be affordable, we're still only at 200 units if everything is built out. And inclusionary zoning programs typically hit, I think, the mid to the high range of affordable. You typically see, I think, in the 0 to 50%, more often an affordable housing provider doing exclusively affordable housing to meet those requirements. So, it's definitely a tool that we could look at and continue to explore and certainly could be expanded, but just from a numbers standpoint, it's going to be difficult for that approach to, to get us to our target.
Yeah. I don't think any one approach is going to get us there. I think it's going to be a lot of approaches. So, I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at having affordable requirements beyond just the town center. And can we increase those requirements in the town center? Because again, I think this isn't a, a silver bullet. This is a whole bunch of different things. So, um, you showed a map of ADU-capable properties. What's the criteria that you use for that? Because I, I'm only calling that out because you included my neighborhood. And I only know of one piece of property in my neighborhood that I would imagine is actually, has a big enough yard to put an ADU in. So, I was just curious what that criteria was.
Yeah, just is, we, we actually did this several different ways because it's a little bit nuanced. All this is, sorry, this is not the right map. Yeah, this is just all properties with an existing single-family home. And at first, we did a calculation.
Okay.
Related from the lot size to the building footprint to see if they had open area. But an ADU could be like on your existing second floor, could be carved out of the existing house. There's not one type of ADU. So, we just, for simple purposes, these are all the single-family homes. They could technically have an ADU of some sort. There's probably some that it would be difficult if not possible to do that, but we haven't gotten really that far down.
Okay. I just didn't want to overestimate our ability for ADUs.
Oh, yeah.
That's not going to get us there either. Because I can't even fit like a doghouse in my backyard, let alone an ADU. So, all right, that's great.
Totally. And, and you just don't see that many of them built anyways. So, again, if we want to consider this as a formal strategy and include it in our capacity, we'll have to come up with a better methodology to count that.
Well, and again, it's my understanding if we want ADUs to actually help solve the affordable problem, not only do we need more of them to be built, but we're also going to have to have some requirement that makes them be affordable housing because a lot of times, especially here, right, they're really built and they're just like a guest house. They're not really for anyone or any of those types of things. So, I think there's, I think there's a lot, lot more to explore there. So, I'm, I'm really open to all of these different things. I think we will have to have a lot of different strategies. I think it would be interesting to overlay some of this with sustainability strategies because when you look at the affordability criteria, it's rent plus utilities, right? So, if you have a building where the utilities are free, the rents can actually be higher. And there is money to be had out there to have more sustainable buildings as well. So, I think some of this can overlap. Thank you. So, David, will you make some of those edits for the principles for us? Or do we need to take a vote on that? Because I just want to make sure that if we give feedback and we want something changed that we...
So, I...
Give you what you need.
I don't hear big changes to those. What I hear instead is refinement of language for clarity.
Correct.
And those, I, I, I think you, you added clarity through comment. Both the comments I've heard so far have added clarity to what we need to say there. So, we're going to watch the tape, go back through, edit them up. But it doesn't change what we were trying to achieve. It just simply clarifies what we're trying to achieve.
Thanks.
All right, we do have 16 to 17 minutes. I, I don't know how many more people. I think we had two people comment so far. Okay, councilmember Andy Pore. Deputy Mary Lamb.
I just had two quick comments. The first one, I'm not even sure if it would be a guideline, but I just wanted to note that, is there a place to note that land use policies will continue to be monitored and adjusted based on production and preservation? Like whether it's captured like in a paragraph somewhere, you know?
Yep. So, so that one would be after the plan is adopted, right? So, so we, we could include that. These were intended to drive the models of the different options that we have for the purpose of your analysis of, of, of putting together the policies and codes to get us there. If I understand correctly, what you're asking is to make sure we have policy and possibly code and, and a permit system that helps us monitor our progress in implementation and dashboard it.
Yeah. And like say one of these don't work, you know, is there, would we drop it or something?
Got it. Okay. So, so if we're in the process of designing our comp plan, say later this year, and we identify that one of these guiding principles is, is really just not appropriate or not working for us, that we, we come back to you and we say, hey, we're going to pull this one out for this reason and can give, and yeah, we, we, I mean, we could, we could, we could add another one in there that's, you know, to continue, continue to evaluate the appropriateness of these principles given, given the changing environment around housing, housing requirements and, and for the city to meet with comprehensive plan update.
Yeah, that would be great. And my only other comment was, is there any conversations around sort of this like equitable distribution, knowing that a lot of these units are going to be in the lower AMI category? And I'm only thinking like rentals and maybe there's, you know, there's resistance to units going into certain areas.
Well, I, I mean, it is something that we have talked about internally with the framework team. And I think for the purposes of tonight, we just started with the existing areas that would allow the certain types of housing that we think are most likely to meet the affordability levels based on the Department of Commerce guidance. And because the commercial or the centers, portions of the city are small in land area, that's essentially what we have, have had to work with. Including the bonus parcels has a substantial impact in terms of capacity for affordable housing as well. And again, we'll bring back those numbers. So, you know, if we think we want to look more in terms of distribution, we would then have to start looking at other areas beyond what we've already looked at that could accommodate those affordability levels. And we, we have not, we have not done that piece yet.
Okay. Like, do you think that's a good idea or not?
Well, I, I, I mean, I can't, it's kind of a, up to the community to determine whether it's a good idea. I can say that providing the capacity to meet the specific affordable housing types is certainly more challenged because of the small land area with which we have to work with. I think certainly if we weren't looking at including the bonus parcels and we were just looking at the centers with, as the only places that allow mid-rise housing, we would be even more challenged to do that. So, I think the other way to think about it is, is, you know, the whole idea of maybe designating some new centers, which again, may not happen as part of this process, but we could lay the foundation for. I think that could open up some more opportunities potentially for some other types of housing in those areas and could be also blended with, you know, other issues around transportation and access to services, so on and so forth. So, I think it's something you could consider. I think it's going to be a difficult thing to pull off. I think it's going to be a difficult thing to pull off because the city is mostly developed. It would probably take a fairly strategic approach in order to establish something like that. So I think there are solutions that work within the land area we're working with right now, but, you know, it's certainly something that could be explored as part of this process.
Okay, those were all my questions.
Councilmember Nupure.
Thank you very much. So I just want us to remember that we're looking 20 years ahead, right? Like, or progressing 20 years down the line, we should have achieved all these goals. So I think my first comment quickly was on number five. I think you've heard a lot on number five so far. I was just curious why just the word aquatic was called out, and I think that refers to stormwater probably, but I think there are other advantages as well to the redevelopment. So again, when you reword that, if you wanted to take into consideration, you know, because like, especially the pictures that you showed, David, you know, it showed more trees as well on those areas. And I know we always talk about our urban forest plan, that could also impact that. So I really want us to include that. For number six, I am, you know, the wedding cake is, you know, tall in the middle and slanted. I think I want us to look at it a little bit differently because, because Samamish is what it is, and, you know, just 25 years ago, it was unincorporated, it was part of different cities. We actually have more denser areas, sort of like Lahani where I live, and then also on the north end, you know, not, not Sali, but the one that's very close to Redmond. You know, so was that, no, the one next to that. So I think, let's think a little bit differently about that concept. And I'm curious to know, you know, how that impacts the way we think on how zoning might change. And then I think those were the only things that I had, because the other ones were asked already.
Do I have anyone else? Yeah, Councilmember Trane.
Dave, well, Dave and I have talked about this already, so I'll just be brief, but be complimentary, be additive, focus on redevelopment of areas of existing impervious surfaces already, you know, where there's already asphalt, concrete, and steel, let's just add to it and go up to meet these numbers, right? I think the other thing that's pretty clear, just after talking to also other King County council members and mayors from other cities over the last two weeks, is they all are struggling with the 0 to 30. So the fact that when David made the comment that a lot of cities are going to come at the five-year mark and go, we haven't done this yet, it's because doing the 0 to 30% is really super difficult. And so when the mayor of Bellevue tells me that they don't even know how they're going to build any of it, I just started to listen. And so one of the things I think we should look at, David, and I don't know how this works, but we should be looking at, how do we get credit for help, spending money to help build affordable housing at the lowest level, together with our other jurisdictions, and then getting credit for that? So if we do 100 homes, let's say at 0 to 30%, and it gets built in Kirkland, just to make up a city here, not that Kirkland's going to do one, I don't know, but, and Bellevue goes in with it, and we go in, and Redmond goes in it, then we all get credit for the percentage at which we are providing that kind of housing, and that we get credit for it. So if we're doing something like that, I think that's a strategy that we need to add to our, we need to know if that's going to be counted. It'd be similar if I were to say, hey, for jobs, because we have people who work from home and they have their home businesses, we don't count that as they have a job here, but they do. So if they would just let us count that, we meet the jobs criteria in 20 years, no problem, just by the way we recount it. Because right now, they don't give us credit for that. So it's similar to the housing issue here, especially that lowest level. So those are my thoughts.
So there was a revision made by the Affordable Housing Committee, GMPC Affordable Housing Committee, to the draft CPPs that were under consideration that included some additional language regarding how jurisdictions would be given credit for partnerships, right? So if Bellevue was funding a project in Redmond, or if Samamish was funding a project in Bellevue, in providing part of that funding through partnerships, that there be consideration of that at the five-year mark. So when we go out to report out at five years, we would, you know, one of the things that we would dashboard is, in addition to units created, is in dollars spent in terms of our arch trust fund dollars or other contributions made, and we would dashboard those out, and we would report that. And this, the county indicated that they would be looking at that as to, you know, a step towards, towards providing those units. We wouldn't be able to count those units in our city, but we would be able to take credit for our portion of the funding that went towards the project.
I'll leave it at that for tonight. All right, do I have anyone else?
I just, I just want to ask, David, I thought, I don't know if it's in a state bill or if it's in the CPPs, but there's specific language that says we have to make sure that we are creating, you know, the ability for housing at all levels. Like, we have to get rid of our exclusionary zoning, and we have to make sure that we create a community where all income levels truly can afford to come and live in our community. That is the goal here. So while I appreciate, and I don't think we should not do partnerships, if we can help make affordable housing happen, I think we have to still actually make our community affordable at all of these different levels.
Agreed. I think that the policy is framed around not wanting to discourage partnerships, right? They see partnerships as an essential mix of that.
Correct.
But the overarching objective is to add the affordability in the community.
Right, I just don't want to make it seem like we could just throw some money somewhere and not have to do it.
Point of order. Yes? Yeah, if this kind of conversation, come on, Pam. Now you're attacking me, because you're making it sound like I'm the one who's saying we're not going to have equity here in our city. That's garbage. I'm actually, I'm figuring out a way to thread a needle. Excuse me. I'm trying to figure out a way to thread a needle with staff, and then you're going to attack me. So Mayor, I have a point of order. She's attacking me personally with that. Comments? Yeah, so perhaps I did not hear everything clearly. I'm not sure. Aren't you coming after me or not? That's, you've, this is about three or four times, Pam. Okay, let's, let's move on, please. We have about four minutes left. My goodness, all right. You do this on a regular basis. So at this point, what do I need to do? Address the point of order?
Yes.
So point is not well taken, and I would like to move on if possible. So we have four minutes left. We have another topic. I assume we need to extend for at least another 30 minutes. Do you have what you need for this?
I do. I really appreciate the conversation. It's a hard one. It's late in the evening, I know. I really appreciate the conversation and all the feedback, and we're going to definitely be watching the tape again. And thank you, Jeff, for the great presentation and feedback. We really appreciate all the help.
All right.
Thank you.
I move to extend to 11:30.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
All right, please continue.
So the next item on the agenda is council consideration of a letter of support for House Bill 1628, the Affordable Homes Act, modifying the local real estate excise tax or REIT. There is a proposal in the, a proposed letter of support in the council's agenda package this evening, and the simple question for council is, do you wish to sign on with other cities and entities in support of HB 1628? And if so, would you also like to direct the city manager to send a letter or note of support to elected state officials? And would you like to direct the city manager to have either the city manager or staff testify in pro of HB 1628?
All right, yeah, Councilmember Howe.
I'm in favor. Of all the things that you just said.
I'll second that.
Was that, was that a motion?
There should be discussion. I can make a motion.
I think Councilmember Nupure has a.
I don't know, I was just waiting for, I wasn't sure if the motion had been made or not.
No, I don't know if it has been.
I was, I was, I would be willing to make that motion, because having read through all of the papers.
Yes, make the motion.
Do it. I, I don't have anything in front of me that says.
Just say you moved the, all the things David just said.
2022 Arch and House Bill 1628.
The Affordable, okay, there we go. I would like to move that we approve the Affordable Homes Act, or that we support the Affordable Homes Act, House Bill 1628, modifying state and local real estate excise taxes, including going as far as writing the letter and testifying, using city staff to testify on its behalf.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Now I'll take some discussion. Councilmember Nupure, did you have something? Sorry. No, okay, just no. Does anyone have discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful ending to this.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate it. Deputy Mary Lamb, your council report.
So tomorrow, I have a Public Issues Committee meeting. I have sent out the main topics. I wanted to focus on one of them, which is the Regional Homelessness Authority Five-Year Plan. The board is looking to approve that April 20. There have been cities that have signed on in support of the five-year plan. That's Kirkland, Issaquah, and Bellevue. There is time to make, one, there's time to write in and support, and there's also time to make additional edits and provide feedback. So one of the updates that I would like to make, well, one, I'd like to, you know, for us to agree to send the letter, but also to include in the update that, under the temporary housing, that we include tent cities as a temporary housing option, and also tiny homes. I think that Tent City Four has been a good neighbor to us, and I'd like to see it in the plan, just to provide that added security to these sanctioned tent cities. And as far as I know, tiny homes have also been successful. So I'd like to know if council does support sending a letter.
With your suggestions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have to make a motion for that, Scott? Or will you guys just send the letter?
I think that's probably enough for us to take action on that. Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Do I have any other council reports, oral ones, I guess?
I just wanted to know, we have our EFOR meeting this week. I sent out the agenda. Karen, I don't know if you concur, but it didn't look like there was anything, there's, I mean, we're going to be like approving the evaluation, the performance review evaluation plan for the chief, and I think that was pretty much it, agreed. If there are any questions, let us know.
Scott, do you have anything?
Yeah, Mayor, it's, it's late, but I just wanted to get these out there as a reminder. Next Tuesday, the 14th, we have a event happening immediately prior to the council meeting with the Snoke County Tribe. It's going to be accepting their very generous and moving gift that they provided us, and we haven't had a chance to meet in person with them to receive that. And then we're also going to be unveiling the art piece during that event. So 5:30 PM, all are welcome. There'll be light refreshments, and then the ceremony itself will start at 6:00. And then we'll break around 6:15, and the council meeting will start at 6:30. I also wanted to remind that on March 15th, it is the opening of our senior services at Beaver Lake Lodge. That event, it's, the hours are 10 to 2, but the ceremony itself and the opening ceremony starts a little after 10:00 in the morning, and I would encourage everyone to join, myself and the deputy mayor there for that event. So looking forward to that as well. And just a quick reminder that on the 28th, which is a Tuesday, this is a clarification, so apologies for confusion previously, we have a joint meeting with the Redmond City Council in, at the city of Redmond. I believe it starts at 7:00 PM. So I just wanted to note that out and remind council of that event, and make sure you knew that it was Tuesday, the 28th. I think at one point, we might have had Thursday, the 24th on the calendar, and that was incorrect. So apologies for that.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to mention something for the good of the order. Tomorrow is International Women's Day, so wear purple, yay. And as your, I'm the commissioner on the Washington State Women's Commission, I chair it, so real honor to represent all women. Tomorrow also, many of us in the Indian community will be celebrating Holi, which is the Festival of Colors. It's to welcome spring, but then also, as usual, it has a story of good over evil. And I just can't help but remark, it was so wonderful to see two engineers today on that call, and then, you know, representing, so it felt like a nice gift to us to hear from them at the earlier presentation. So just that, thank you.
All right, do I have anything else? All right, would anyone like to make that motion?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we adjourned, thank you.